Will you call our meeting to order, please? Today is January 14, 2020. This is the Sound of Barbara City Council. Welcome, everyone. We'll do our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Potem Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Present.
And Mayor Mario.
Here.
Thank you. We have some ceremonial items. Ms. Clerk, number one. Item one, Employee Recognition Service Award Pins. Mr. Casey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and councilmembers. Each month, I like to come to city council and recognize employees for achieving certain milestones in their service to the city, so I'd like to read some names into the record in recognition of their service. There's no one here to receive their pins in person this month. With five years of service to the city, Bob Collette, Human Resources Analyst II, Administrative Services Department; Robert Stowe, Administrative Specialist, Administrative Services Department; Chloe Ward, Police Record Supervisor, Police Department; and Dana Hoffenberg, Water Resources Specialist, Public Works Department. With 10 years of service to the city, Dustin McGrew, Detective, Police Department; Bruno Peterson, Police Officer, with the Police Department. With 15 years of service to the city, Lauren Anderson, Senior Building Inspector Specialist, Community Development Department; Dean Milon, Fire Engineer, Fire Department; Brandon Page, Fire Captain, Fire Department; Spencer Simons, Fire Engineer, Fire Department; David Berkovich, Fire Engineer, Fire Department; Corey Cloud, Fire Captain, Fire Department; and Jeremy Denton, Fire Captain, Fire Department; Chelsea Swanson, Associate Transportation Planner, Public Works Department; Juan Almeida, Senior Grounds Maintenance Worker, Parks and Recreation Department; Gabrielle Caratachia, Grounds Maintenance Worker II, Parks and Recreation Department; and Jean Meehan, Senior Airport Operations Specialist with the Airport Department. And with 20 years of service to the city, Matt Gritt, Fire Engineer, Fire Department; and John Thompson, Police Officer, Police Department.
Okay, that was it, 20. Sometimes I go up to 30, so, thank you. And we thank all those employees for their service and congratulate them on these milestones. Mr. Casey, are there any changes to our agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, very good. We'll go to public comment. Marc Marshall Wafford, you're first. Come on up. You've got three minutes at the microphone. So this is the city council's opportunity to hear from members of the public on items that are not on our agenda. So Holly Pareja is over here. She'll make an appointment if you want to meet with any of us or get you answers from staff. She's very good at that, too. We can't really get into a conversation with you because your item's not on the official agenda. So, Mr. Wafford, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I've just got a lot of issues going on with my health, and I think I'm going to get it straightened out. I just talked with somebody. But I know that they say that law is the voice of the people, justice makes it heard, and injustice is another bad thing, but I'm trying to get through with this. And I'm going to have surgery on my left foot on the 20th and my shoulder within two months after that. I've talked to somebody, and they said they're trying to get that crosswalk issue taken care of as well. For what it's worth, I'm just praying to God nobody gets hurt up there in the meantime, but this is just a lot of close calls I've seen. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for being up there and doing a great job, and Happy New Year, and God bless everybody. I did find this ring on that California Coastal cleanup day, and I got it back after waiting 90 days, and I did post it up. So, I don't know. Anyways, you guys have a blessed day. Thank you.
Thanks. Monica Ramirez, you're next. Come on up. You'll be followed by Elizabeth Reed, Ellen Gallegos, Jeffrey Dornbos, Phil Walker. Go ahead, please.
So, as you know, I am a Tumash Native American, born, raised, raised my children, and I have asked the council many, many times to please look into and investigate the kidnapping and the holding hostage of my children, Scott Lloyd Howard, who has been kidnapped for the past three years. I haven't seen him or spoken to him. Judge Hill gave me a protective order for 10 years. Robert Lee Howard gets out of jail, prison. One year later, he gets custody of my child through the cruelty of Mary Howard sabotaging my good merit and laying lies and claims about me. I don't know what's going on, but this is a retaliation, and it's against the law. They had a mock trial through Child Welfare Services at the Juvenile Court to kidnap my child. I did not get any representation. I got charged petition 300, and it was not true. I had housing. I had food. They're sabotaging me, and I'm begging you, begging you, please, give me back my children. I love them so very much. I didn't do anything. Please, I want my children. I can't live without my kids. I've been a mother for 34 years. I want my kids. I have case files here, and I've asked you for two and a half years to please, please investigate. Mary Howard is holding my son, Scott Howard, hostage. She's been doing it for the past three years. I have submitted a whole entire file of proof of the case, of the protective order from Judge Hill, the protective order from Judge Herman for three years. I have showed you proof of visitation order from Judge De Dona. Please, 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 get my son, Scott. I don't know if he's going to school. He is a violent criminal. He's got multiple prior convictions of violent, beating people up. He was trying to kill Dakota. Go look in the archives. There's a picture of him cutting Dakota's neck and his hands on his neck. Please, 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 give me back my sons. Please find them. Dakota was attempted murdered three times since 2016. I need to know where my children are. I need you to please help me and enforce the protective order from Judge Hill. Mary Howard is retaliating against me. I didn't get a chance to testify. Judge Hill, in the order it says in the case, to protect the witnesses prior to testifying. Instead, you took my children, and I haven't spoken to them in three years, and I was had surgery.
Ms. Ramirez, thank you for your comment.
Can I please get a response? My phone number is on the piece of paper.
You and I have talked before. We can talk again.
No, we haven't. It's like every time I get an appointment, they say, "No, the appointment's not there."
Elizabeth Reed, your turn. Ellen Gallegos, after you. Thanks.
Good afternoon. This is my fourth time here about my street with my neighbors around me. The additional cars and congestion that will be the outcome of adding the two AUDs you heard about in previous sessions is now being compounded by a third potential ADU on Arriba Way. Even as our concerns about being able to evacuate or have first responders be able to access our street have continued unabated, other neighborhoods in our high fire areas have seen AUD permitting signs go up next door to them. Have you seen the conversations on Next Door these past few days? I know the state's mandated increased housing, and your options to protect us seem to have been limited. I expect you have instructed staff to investigate what might be done to make changes and mitigate the liability to the city if you don't follow the state rules. The state's taken on some liability. Many people above foothill have had insurance canceled or rates drastically increased. The state insurance will take a major hit if we all burn. We're taking a major hit now, and it just keeps getting worse. I'd like to know what you've done or intend to do to minimize the liability created for us for evacuation planning and emergency access and for dealing with the proliferation of greater hazard levels from each new set of cars and people. I wonder if, for a start, you have considered the seemingly simple act of changing the ministerial approval process to actually include some site inspections and verifying the information affirmed by the potential builder is true. If the information about easements, slopes, setbacks, or ownership and so on is shown to be untrue, why won't you void the permit as a fraudulent application? Is it not possible to enact a regulation requiring some accountability for X number red tag or stop work or false information incidents on a given permit? What if there are criminal charges pending on the owner of the site? Surely even the state should object to repeat offenders of a standardized permitting process. Item 12 on your agenda is to alleviate the condition that led to the adoption of an interim urgency ordinance. And then to create another urgency ordinance. I'm hoping that what you're going to do with that item 12 is to enact one to help us.
You need to talk about that item when it comes up.
Okay. We feel the urgency. We still need help, and we're still engaged in this discussion. We feel our lives day to day, and fire by fire matter. Thank you.
Ms. Reed, Councilmember Sneddon has a question or a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a comment that I can see, and I thank you for coming and keeping this issue at our forefront. And if, either as a collective or individuals, if you'd like to please make an appointment through Holly, I'd like to meet with you and get an update and be able to communicate with you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thanks. Mr. Gallegos, ready?
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I appreciate all the time and effort you put forth to try and better our community, so thank you. We are requesting that the four building permits associated with the two ADUs on Arriba Way be revoked. Our issues with these permits are based off of a lot of due diligence, where we have uncovered an enormous amount of information that shows malicious intent to skirt building department hurdles and fast-track these two ADUs. Without our due diligence combined with the applicant's illicit activity, there would be no stop work orders. Without our due diligence combined with the applicant's illicit activity, there would be no criminal case. We are now asking council and the city attorney's office to protect our community from what are clearly revocable permits. These permits were approved based off of information that was misleading, incorrect, and in some cases, potentially fraudulent. As Michael Corrigan said last week, we are not talking about innocent mistakes here. We are talking about missing, incorrect, and potentially fraudulent information in multiple instances throughout the permit application process across not one, but two building permits. Bad actors that are trying to take advantage of our codes that directly add risk to citizens of Santa Barbara cannot be tolerated. I believe we are all on the same page here. Council voted unanimously to prohibit ADUs on Arriba Way due to safety concerns on December 17th. I believe we are all on the same page here. The city hired a full-time prosecutor, and the subtitle of the independent stated, "City hires full-time prosecutor to take on rogue construction activity, nuisance activities." I believe we are all on the same page here. It is time for us to agree that bad actors gaining the system and obtaining permits through illicit activity who add risk to the innocent should lose their permits via our revocation ordinance and be required to start over with honest, factual, and correct information. I mean, we can't have applicants making up slope and grading numbers at the building counter in order to fast-track a permit at the risk of health and safety to surrounding citizens. Currently, with no real penalty, it encourages other builders to partake in fraud to increase profit. In this case, the applicant was caught, and it's a clear-cut case to revoke. Our tax dollars need to stand up against this, and we need to tell the building department to begin revocation. Please, I ask you, our neighbors ask you, to stand up to rogue construction activity that will adversely affect our health and safety. We are law-abiding folks throughout the Mission Canyon residing in both the city and the county in a high-fire and high-risk location.
Thank you, Mr. Gallegos. Mr. Dornbos? Phil Walker after him. Uh-huh? Yeah, sure.
There we go. Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. I'm here also because of 2924 and 2919 Arriba Way ADUs. Just to refresh your memory, and for those who haven't seen this ADU here.
There's a thing on top. Yeah.
Okay. There we go. This is our backyard. This is a proposed building on the hillside below us, two bedrooms, ADU, two floors, standing 22 feet tall, with a deck facing our backyard, not the canyon or the mountains, but facing our backyard, less than 15 feet off the property line. If I walk this way and turn around, this is what we will see. A building that stands 29.5 feet tall on the hill above us, three floors, one bedroom, exterior metal staircase, 150-foot-long driveway that would be elevated to be 14 feet above our recreation area, three feet off the property line, with no discernible way for cars to stop from rolling into our backyard. This would require 339 cubic yards of cut and 448 cubic yards of fill dirt to make this all happen, none of which was disclosed on the original permit, and that would be a clear omission of information, it would seem to me. This also has the feature of a seven-and-a-half-foot-floor-to-ceiling shower window directly into the occupant's shower, looking directly down onto our property. These ADUs would increase, this is the view from the cul-de-sac. These ADUs would increase the population of these neighboring parcels from the current number of eight adults to up to 14 or more, all with cars. These ADUs will clearly infringe on our privacy, our safety, and our quality of life in an unnecessary and egregious manner in a high-fire neighborhood that has been evacuated several times in the last 15 years. Two stop work orders and 14 legal complaints have been levied on these ADU projects, and yet the builder and licensed contractor is allowed to move forward. We have significant evidence that these permits were approved based on egregious and multiple instances of incorrect and omitted information, and I'm asking the city council and the city attorney's office to support revocation of both ADU's permits. It's the right thing to do, and you have the right to do it. We need your help. I thank you for your time, and I am willing to speak with any of you in more detail at your convenience. Thank you all.
All right. Very good. Mr. Walker, you're next. You'll be followed by Ken Dunkley, Jose Arturo Gallegos, and Dorothy Dent will be our final speaker, and I won't take any more slips today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, newly-minted and wonderful members of the city council and Madam Mayor. I'd like to speak to you today about slowdown in Santa Barbara. The traffic speeds are becoming a little bit over the top, especially on the east side with the Quinientos, Canada Bridge still being closed. It's amazing. And December 27th, when the I-5 was closed, somehow the traffic app, navigational app, diverted everybody off 101 when they were heading the back up there that, you know, backs up through Montecito, down Summerland, Carpinteria. And somehow, they got diverted to Milpa Street and turned the first light, which is Quinientos Street where I live. And it was unbelievable that went on for several hours, people shaking fists at each other, tires screeching, and a lot of very unhappy campers on the arterial streets in the city. So, you have that problem and the fact people are speeding. It's amazing. I walk a lot around noon time down from Quinientos to my wife's family home on Lower Canada Street, down Voluntario, Ponte Gorda, around the sweep there where the freeway butts very closely. And the gentleman across the street saw two, two high-end cars. It was almost like they were racing. BMWs hit that curve at the bend there on to Ponte Gorda, and they must have been going at least 55 miles an hour. And he said, "Look at this." And my wife yesterday was at Voluntario in Casique. She almost got hit by a lady, just not, you know, it's confusing there, right where the Quick Stop Market, it used to be Riparetti's Lounge. She was nearly hit yesterday by people either unobservant, unaware, or going a little too fast, or lack of visibility. So, it's becoming a big concern on the east side, too. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Dunkley.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. A couple of new councilmembers, since I've been here before. I'm here also talking about the ADU projects permitted at 2919 and 2924 Arriba Way. I live on Ben Lohman Drive in the neighborhood, although I am in the county, and I just wanted to support the other folks that have spoken. I've spoken before, especially passionately, about the public safety and the fire danger, and I know that there has been something taken, action taken by the council to address that, and I appreciate that very much, especially for all future circumstances of these permits. But for the two projects I'm speaking about specifically, I just want to reiterate a couple of very simple points that have already been brought up here today. The errors on the permits were clearly not unintentional. A lot of paperwork can sometimes be challenging for homeowners in the city, but in this case, the owner of the two properties is a licensed contractor. He knew what he was doing. Incorrect surveys inaccurately depicting the topography and the slopes, the cut and fill required. Jeffrey's already outlined, I think he said that there would be no more than 50 cubic yards of fill, and it probably is going to be 300-something to be able to prepare the sites. Existing parking being misrepresented, and he stated he was the primary resident at two places. I think it's clear that there needs to be a revocation and starting from scratch. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Jose Arturo Gallegos. And then Dorothy Dent.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This past Saturday, a friend of mine, I, when we went down south to visit a friend of ours who's still laid up in the hospital in San Fernando Valley, and on the way back, coming back to Santa Barbara, my friend resides on the 500 block of Sampa's Wall Street. He's a homeowner. He and his wife live in the house in front, and there's a house in back. And we were talking about, hey, so what's going on with that bike lane on Rancheria? He goes, "It's horrible. It's really bad." He goes, "I can't believe that the city decided to do that, to take away that residential parking to put a bike lane." So sarcastically, we were joking, "Well, I bet you morning rush hour with bikes and evening rush hour must be horrible." Like bumper-to-bumper, little bicycles." And we were just sarcastically, he is angry about that, because there are times when he comes home from work that, yes, there is a driveway there. He has a truck, his wife has a car, and then the renters in back, they have a vehicle. Yeah, there's room back there. But when he comes home from work, and he wants to park in front of his house because, you know, within an hour or so, he needs to go out, go someplace, he and the missus. And backing out of that driveway is a nightmare, because now everybody's flooded on Sampa's Wall Street. Everybody that resides on Rancheria, now they're parking their cars on Sampa's Wall. It's just packed. And when he wants to pull out of that driveway, it's very hard for him to see oncoming traffic. He says hardly anybody uses that bike lane in Rancheria. Very few. And he lives in that area. So, now, the proposed bike lane at Aliso Street, same thing. It is a high-density residential street from the 900 block all the way down to the end. When I went to the workshop at Neighborhood Franklin Center about revitalizing the Milpa's area, my suggestion was, "Well, don't put it there. The best thing to do is to put it on Quarantina Street. Less traffic. You have the high school nearby there. You have Santa Barbara Junior High School. You have Ortega Park. And some industrial on Quarantina, some residential. But that would be a better place to put it, all the way down to Casique." One person stated, "Well, once you get to the Marburg area, it's very dangerous in that area, especially if you want to ride your bike at night because of the homeless situation." That I understand. I get it. But my suggestion is better lighting in that area. Better lighting, and that might deter some of the homeless. Get some really, really powerful lighting, you know, in that area, and put a bike lane there. A bike lane on Aliso Street? Uh-uh. It's just, if high density, people are fighting for parking spaces now, it's no longer a single, you know, single families living in these homes. You've got two or three families. So, anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Dorothy Dent, our final speaker for public comment. Welcome.
I am so privileged to be from Santa Barbara, and I'm very thankful that there are so many active Santa Barbs to protect our community and our citizens from harm and make Santa Barbara a better place. I have a plea today, and I have short success stories. Welcome to all seven city council members and the district elected. My plea is that all the council members will revote on the measure that places a brand-new police station over the farmer's market site. I feel that neither the farmer's market crowd, police supporters, or city officials are that happy with this plan, its transparency and/or its lack of community support. My plea is that you either have the public vote on this itself, or you all seven vote on this again, or you decide not to build a new one at all and let the people stay there with this commuter lot and the benefit of having it on the weekends available for something like farmer's markets or other craft fairs or different things people can contribute, because it is a public space. Because America cannot be expected to break a tie when too many conflicts of interest exist with the tenant parties and the city's landlord, this site is so special, and I appreciate, and the community appreciates it so much. My son's 30th birthday is today, and the day before he was born, on January 13, 1990, when the summer solstice manager Claudia came up to our stall at the farmer's market selling the organic vegetables, she told me that I looked ripe. And the next day, Lauren was born. As I enjoyed being a vendor at over six markets a week, my family loves the market and wants you to know how special it is and what a great life we've had in Santa Barbara. All my kids lived in Santa Barbara up until a few months ago, when my oldest now works for Google, and my son is still organic gardening, and all of them are participating in life to the full extent. So, it's just one more plea. I know that the farmer's market only uses some hours on the weekends, and very often with parking lots with the police department, it's not used all on the weekends because there's not as many personnel there. So, it seems like there should be an ability to continue to have it somewhere near the premises, very near the community, where people can enjoy it. And I hope that the police will work toward supporting some of the poor people and the inneed people rather than just continuing to try to profit off people, which you don't want to do. So, thank you for working hard on this community.
All right. That closes public comment, and we'll go to our consent calendar. Ms. Clerk, you have some items to read for us.
Item two, introduction of ordinance approving the 2019 through 2020 Supervisory Employees' Bargaining Unit Memorandum of Understanding and Adoption of the Resolution Amending Resolution Number 19041, the Position and Salary Control Resolution for fiscal year 2020. Recommendation, the council, A, ratify the memorandum of understanding with the Santa Barbara City Supervisory Employees Bargaining Unit through the introduction and subsequent adoption of, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, adopting the 2019 through 2020 Supervisors Memorandum of Understanding and providing for compensation changes for confidential supervisory employees; and B, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Resolution Number 19041, the Position and Salary Control Resolution for fiscal year 2020, affecting certain classifications in the supervisors and confidential supervisors bargaining units effective January 14, 2020. And item three, resolution for the assignment and transfer of city easements at the Gutierrez Street Bridge to the Santa Barbara County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, approving the assignment of existing city easement interests on private properties to the Santa Barbara County Flood Control and Water Conservation District for flood control and all related purposes, and authorizing the city administrator to execute as necessary the easement assignment deeds in a form approved by the city attorney.
Thank you so much. If there's no further objection, we'll waive further reading, and I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent calendar.
So moved.
That was Friedman with a second from Harmon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Consent calendar done. And the ordinance committee met today. Mr. Gutierrez, you're the new chair of the ordinance. Mr. Gutierrez, you're the new chair of the ordinance committee. Are you, can you make a report for us, please?
Yes, we instructed staff to, well, we voted to approve staff recommendations with the stipulation of, I've drawn a blank.
You're making changes to the living wage ordinance?
Correct, yes. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So number 10, Ms. Clerk.
Item, item 10, advisory groups and council liaisons appointments.
So because we have two new people on the council and two people left, the assignments of the people who left are up for grabs. We all have liaison assignments, and so now's the time to shuffle the deck or trade, claim which ones you want. The people who have been on the council the longest have seniority, and they have first pick of the open seats. So we're, if everyone has their list in front of them, we'll just go through them. And I know some people have already looked to see what was up for grabs, what your schedule would allow. So for instance, the Housing Authority Commission meets on Wednesdays at four, once a month. I can't remember if it was the third or fourth Wednesday of the month, but, so grab ones that you can attend, and actually, you don't have to attend them all. Some of mine I watch on TV. We have reruns online. So we just want each council member to be connected to some of our advisory boards. And it's actually a fun part of serving on the council. A lot of work is done in the committee level, so. Access Advisory Committee. Ms. Harmon, did you want to stay on that assignment?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you need an alternate in case you can't go?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Airport Commission is up for grabs.
Madam Mayor, I'm interested in that one.
I think you'd be good for that one. I don't see anyone else piping up. It's yours. Architectural Board of Review is available. And we could divide up the Design Review Board assignments, so that's ABR, HLC, Single Family Design Board, and Planning Commission. I would actually like to keep an eye on the ABR. Was anyone else interested?
I was, Madam Mayor, but I'm happy to take a different design board if you'd like to.
Would you like to be my alternate?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll do Mario Harmon on ABR. Arts Advisory Committee, you want to stay with that?
I actually have a conflict with that, so I'm going to step down, and I think Councilman Gutierrez would be great on that one.
I'll take that, please. Thank you.
Since you have an interest in the arts, that's perfect, right?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we doing lights, or are we just speaking out? I had my light on for the ABR.
It looks like people are just speaking out, and so, but go ahead. Go ahead, please, on ABR.
On ABR, I'm very happy to have you on ABR, and I do think it would be a good idea for those four design committees to be split. And I don't know if we're going to just do them one at a time alphabetically through and then we'll voice them.
Yeah, we're going just down this list.
And then we just speak up?
Do you want to grab another one? You can, yeah.
I'm interested in Single Family Design Board, but.
That's up.
Okay. Did you, I don't want to go out of order.
You're making an early, an early stake of the claim. Okay, good.
Okay. So we just speak up when there's something we're interested in?
Well, we are going down the list. But I'm sorry I didn't recognize that you wanted, that you were interested in ABR. Okay.
Thank you.
Plenty of work to go around here. So Building and Arts Advisory, Oscar Gutierrez. Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals is mine. I'd like to keep it. Citizens Oversight Committee, which is Measure C, that's mine, and I'd like to keep it. Civil Service Commissioners.
I'm willing to give that up if somebody wants it.
And that doesn't meet very frequently, is that right, Mr. Casey? It's when there's an issue with an employee and there's an employment issue of some kind, so.
I'll take that.
Okay. So Alejandra Gutierrez, we'll take that one. Community Development and Human Services Committee, Oscar Gutierrez has it now.
I'd like to keep it.
You want to keep it?
Yeah.
And that's kind of an annual thing, right? That, the rhythm, it's not busy all year round. Okay. Community Events and Festivals Committee, Harmon.
Madam Mayor, this is a difficult meeting for me to make, so I think I should pass it along to, I think, Oscar.
I'd like to take that.
Okay. So O Gutierrez. Kind of fun that we have two Gutierrezes. We've got to work on that. Creeks Advisory Committee, Ms. Sneddon, you're the primary, and the alternate position is open. Do you want to keep that?
I would like to keep that. Thank you.
Be happy to jump in as the alternate. Have a little history there.
Mr. Jordan was a founding member of the Creeks Committee with a very good friend of mine. So so glad that you're jumping back into it. Okay. So Creeks is Sneddon, Jordan. Downtown Parking Committee, that, you're the primary left. Ms. Harmon, you're the alternate. Do you want to become the primary?
Yes, I've been attending, and I'd like to continue as the liaison if that's acceptable to colleagues.
Yes, ma'am. Would anyone else like to be the alternate to Downtown Parking?
Is that still early in the morning?
Yes, it is.
Is there donuts?
Yes, there are.
I'll be the alternate. If nobody else wants it.
Okay. That's how to get people to your meeting, serve some donuts. So Harmon, Jordan for the Downtown Parking Committee. And I guess I'd also like to say that any of us could go to any of these meetings, right, Mr. Casey? If there's more than three of us, it gets a little dicey because of the Brown Act. So if you see three other people, you know, don't, don't go in. But, yeah, you can check any of them out and have a donut. Fire and Police Commissioners, Oscar Gutierrez.
I'd like to keep it, please.
Keep it. Harbor Commission, Mr. Friedman.
I'll keep that.
Oh, I'd love to arm wrestle with you on that, kind of on the.
You can have it.
On the airports and your district and harbors.
I didn't think anybody'd want it, so, but if you want it, you could have it.
Be happy to take that. Thanks.
Wow. Cou de grâce. So Jordan is Harbor Commissioner Liaison now. Okay. Housing Authority Commission, that one's open. Oh, did I miss one? Historic Landmarks Commission is Mr. Gutierrez.
I'd be willing to give that up if somebody wants to take it.
Does someone else have an interest in Historic Landmarks Commission? It meets Mondays, am I right?
I believe it's Wednesdays.
No, Wednesdays? Does somebody have that?
Every other Wednesday.
Madam Mayor?
Every other Wednesdays.
Every other Wednesday? Wow, that's a big assignment. Yes.
Significant workload for that committee this year.
Okay. You're scaring people off, I think.
Madam Mayor, I'm very interested in Historic Landmarks, but I cannot make the meetings. So I, but I could be liaison if you're unable to make the meetings and would.
I'm willing to give it up if you're willing to take it. You can always watch.
You could be the primary. Is there someone else besides Mr. Gutierrez that wants to be the secondary or the alternate? Oh, I can back you up on that. And because I think going to the meetings is tough, but we can monitor them online afterwards, right? Is that what you're thinking?
If that's acceptable to the council as a liaison assignment.
Okay. So Historic Landmarks Commission, Sneddon, primary, Mario backup. Housing Authority Commission.
I'm interested in, okay. I would like to take that.
Okay. And you have seniority, Ms. Harmon, so you can take that. And we'll put you as an alternate, Ms. Gutierrez.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I think we've talked about seniority before in terms of seniority in the position versus seniority on council. And I just want to understand, is it seniority?
It's the person who's been on the council longer gets seniority.
Okay.
So, thank you. Library Board, Mr. Friedman.
I'd like to stay on that one.
We love our libraries. Living Wage Advisory Committee, Oscar Gutierrez.
I'm willing to give that up if somebody wants it.
Is anyone else interested in Living Wage Advisory Committee? It still meets on Wednesdays?
Yes.
And it's about quarterly?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not a huge commitment?
I'll take that.
Okay. Put an A in front of that, Gutierrez. Neighborhood Advisory Council, and because the Neighborhood Advisory Council focuses on east side, west side, and downtown, then it should be Ms. Gutierrez, Mr. Gutierrez, and Ms. Harmon. That makes, makes sense. Parks and Recreation Commission, Ms. Sneddon.
I'd like to keep that.
Keep that. Planning Commission, there's a big one.
Love to jump in on that one.
Mr. Jordan, are you sure you're not tired of Planning Commission stuff?
Might be unqualified.
Okay, so Jordan gets Planning Commission. I don't see anybody else going for it, so good. Rental Housing Mediation Board, Oscar Gutierrez, with me as an alternate. I'll stay as the alternate.
I'm willing to give up that if somebody wants to take it.
I'll take it.
That one meets sort of quarterly, huh?
Yeah.
It's only when there's a mediation, but it's always interesting when they do have a meeting. So A Gutierrez, and I'll stay as alternate. Santa Barbara Youth Council, that takes two people. They meet twice a month. They do a lot of activities. Do you want to stay on that, Mr. Gutierrez?
I'd like to stay on that one, please.
Want to stay on that, Ms. Sneddon?
I have difficulty making those meetings.
Monday night still?
Monday night still, if, but I'm happy to be in the capacity that we have been liaison continuing on. But again, wanted to see if that is approved by council, that that's an okay way to serve that position. Otherwise, I'm happy to share it or give it up.
I'm willing to take it on.
Okay. Great.
Okay. So it's kind of two primaries, really, not even secondary. So Gutierrez and Gutierrez on that one. Single Family Design Board, Ms. Sneddon.
If we're splitting up the design boards, would it be possible for someone else to take, I think Councilmember Sneddon has both HLC and SFDB. Perhaps someone else could take one of those two. I'm interested in being on a design board, and I don't know, Councilmember Sneddon, if you have a preference between those two, or?
I suppose between the two, I'd prefer Single Family Design Board. They were all four held before by a single council member.
Yeah.
I'm interested as well.
You're interested in design board stuff?
If there's any way.
Single Family Design, do you want to do that one?
Single Family Design would be my first choice.
Can Ms. Gutierrez be a backup for you on SFDB? They meet more than once a month, right, Mr.? There's plenty of.
Yeah, that one is also Mondays every other week.
There's plenty of liaison to go around there. So Sneddon, A Gutierrez on Single Family Design Board.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Good?
I do have a question. Was, for the HLC then, did we appoint Councilmember Sneddon to that one? If I'm understanding correctly, and then to Ms. Harmon's point, we, I think it's good to split them up between the four, and since that was your, the Single Family Design was your primary, if we could reopen the HLC.
Historic Landmarks Commission? Well, Ms. Sneddon said she prefers Single Family Design. I'm happy to be the secondary on Historic Landmarks Commission, but not the primary.
I would like HLC if we've reopened it.
Are we reopening both of those then?
No, just HLC, because you already said you prefer Single Family Design Board.
Okay.
I'm happy to.
Could Mr. Khan elaborate on the workload for HLC, what it is there?
The ordinance we released in draft on November 13th is now in its seventh revision. It will spend a lot of time with the HLC before it moves through to Civic Engagement Ordinance Committee and Council.
If we're reopening both of those, then I suppose I prefer HLC because I've done substantial work already with this ordinance and over the last two years. And so between the two, given that workload, I'd prefer HLC.
Okay. So HLC is Sneddon, Mario. Single Family Design Board is Harmon, Alejandra Gutierrez. Good? Thank you. The Sister Cities Board, my name is on it. Mr. Gutierrez has been doing a lot of work with that. Can we share it?
Sure, if you like.
Okay. So O Gutierrez and Mario. I'll let you take the lead.
Thank you.
Thank you. Transportation and Circulation Committee, Ms. Harmon, do you want to stay the primary?
Madam Mayor, I'll give that up if someone has an interest.
Okay, so both the primary and the alternate position is open.
I'm interested.
So A Gutierrez. Anyone else?
What, when is that meeting?
It's.
Once a month.
Streets, roads, bicycle.
I want to say Wednesdays, once a month.
Bus. They have a lot of contact with MTD Bus. Transportation. Circulation.
Did you want it, Mr. Jordan? You can have it.
Yeah, you need more assignments.
Sort of agnostic.
Sure, you can take it.
Okay.
So Alejandra Gutierrez and Michael Jordan on that one. Water Commission, do you want to stay the primary, Ms. Sneddon?
Yes, please.
And Mr. Friedman, do you want to stay the alternate?
Yes.
Okay. Finance Committee, we figured it out. Mr. Friedman, you're the chair, and Alejandra Gutierrez and Megan Harmon are your committee members. Mr. Gutierrez, you're the chair of the ordinance committee. Ms. Sneddon and Mr. Jordan are on the committee. Community Choice Energy, the three of us, Friedman, Mario, Sneddon. I'd like to stay on it.
Yeah, we're kind of almost done with it, so it's good to stay on it.
I'd like to stay.
Okay. Farmers Market Relocation Subcommittee, Friedman, Harmon, Sneddon.
Like to stay.
Keep it? Okay. Police Station Ad Hoc Committee, Harmon and Sneddon, did you want to stay on? And I had been filling in for, no, I hadn't been filling in on that one.
I'm interested in that one.
Yes, I did. Okay, so, okay, so A Gutierrez, Police Station, Harmon, Sneddon. Thanks. Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan Subcommittee, Friedman and Sneddon, do you want to stay on?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
And there's an opening for another person.
I'd love to, I'd love to jump in there.
Jordan on that. We'll hear about that later today, folks. Thanks for sitting with us through our assignments. Sustainability Council Committee, I'd like to stay on it. But there's an, Ms. Sneddon, can you stay on it?
Yes, please.
You're busy over there. There's an opening for Sustainability Council Committee. Anybody?
When does that meet, Madam Mayor?
It moves around, it changes, it adapts to us, actually. So sometimes they squeeze it in in the morning. Want to try that?
I would love it. If there's, if no one else would like to take it, I'll defer to other people.
I don't hear anybody, so it's Harmon, Mario, Sneddon.
Thank you.
The Committee on Legislation, Mr. Friedman and Ms. Harmon, do you want to stay on that?
Yes.
Yes, please.
And there's an opening?
I'm interested in that. If, if, it meets, how often does it meet? As needed?
Very rarely.
Okay.
Couple times a year.
Yeah, twice a year.
I have interest in that if there isn't.
So Sneddon. Sneddon, Friedman, Harmon. The Deleguera Plaza Revitalization Design Advisory Committee, Ms. Sneddon, did you want to stay on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, and there's an opening on that, Delegara Plaza. Anybody?
Madam Mayor, I'm interested in this committee. I'm looking at Councilmember Jordan.
I don't hear anybody else, so good. It looks like we've eliminated, or some of these committees are, been retired. Ms. Sneddon, Coast Village Association?
Yes, please.
So now we're doing outside agencies. Downtown Santa Barbara, I'll keep that. Hospitality Santa Barbara is open, so that's...
I'm interested in that.
The Restaurant and Lodging Association is what it used to be called, so A. Gutierrez. Looking Good Santa Barbara. I'm the primary. I'm willing to give that one up if anybody else has an interest. They're a great group.
What do they do?
Looking Good Santa Barbara, they're, it's under the Environmental Services Department, and it's beautification and cleaning up.
I would, I would be interested in that if nobody else is. I wasn't, I wasn't originally planning on that one, but, so if there's anybody else who has interest, but if there's a need.
Okay. Sneddon, and then I'll be your alternate, how's that?
Sounds good.
PATH Neighborhood Partnership, Mr. Gutierrez, do you want to stay on that?
Yes, please.
And actually, it should be Ms. Gutierrez on that, because it has to do with the east side. Presidio Joint Powers Committee. They hardly ever meet, but it's open. It's kind of a downtown-ish thing. Ms. Harmon, you want to?
That sounds great.
Okay. Santa Barbara Beautiful, Mr. Friedman?
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that one.
Okay. Santa Barbara Center for the Performing Arts, Mr. Gutierrez?
I'd like to stay on that one, please.
The Granada and all of its activities. Visit Santa Barbara, Ms. Harmon?
I'm happy to stay on it, but if someone else has a strong interest, I would defer to them.
I'd like to take that one.
Okay.
So Oscar Gutierrez wants to take that?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I have a question before you leave that category. I'm just confused with those list of names, why there's not a liaison to the chamber?
The, the Santa Barbara Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah.
We sometimes get invited to their Government Relations Committee meeting?
I've been invited, and I'm just wondering what the path is to get them on the list of city-related agencies. Given the, given the scope of some of those others, I'm kind of at a, kind of at a loss to explain to anybody why the chamber isn't on that list for us also. Or how does the chamber get on there? Just ask?
I think our door is open.
Okay.
It's, it's a good question to their organization, perhaps, why they haven't wanted a formal liaison representative. I can just tell you, I know that they have, Mr. Epstein has been, Steve Epstein has been active with their Government Relations Committee. They do invite us, but you want to be the person then?
Well, I'd love to, specifically, Steve asked me why we're not on the list, and I didn't have an answer, because we were talking about liaison appointments, and so I know they're interested.
Well, it sounds like a miscommunication, because we're waiting for them to make a move, and they're waiting for us, so there, we have a partnership. To that.
If you'd like to add them to the, I know they want to be added, so if you'd like to add them to the list, I'd be happy to volunteer.
Mr. Epstein could have gotten ahold of me before this meeting, so I'll be speaking to him about that.
Okay.
So that would be under Regional Agency, Mr. Casey. We'll add it, Ms. Clerk, with Mr. Jordan as the primary. Would anyone else like to be the secondary? It seems like a pretty big...
I'd like to, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Harmon? Jordan, Harmon. Onto Regional Agencies, Beach Erosion Authority for Clean Oceans and Nourishment, Beacon, Mr. Friedman?
I'd like to stay on that, and I think this is one we could do an alternate on it, if anybody's interested.
Do you mind describing what it is for your colleagues?
So it meets every other month on a Friday morning, I think it's the third Friday of the month, and it's a joint powers agency between the county of Santa Barbara County of Ventura and all the coastal cities. And we meet and discuss beach erosion issues, sediment transportation, sea level rise, and it ties into a lot of the item that we're going to be hearing later today, actually.
I'd like to be alternate if that's, if, if nobody else.
Sure. You're, it just seems like you've got a lot of assignments, and Mr. Jordan, you're not really, are we giving you enough to do over there?
Just deferring to those who are more senior.
To those who have more senior...
I'd be happy to get involved in that one. I was going to say something before.
I'm, I'm happy for Mr. Jordan to be the alternate.
So Friedman, Jordan. Sorry, Mr. Jordan, we didn't mean to say, "Don't pipe up."
Good, and I have to miss the first meeting, so you're going.
Slacker.
That one's an afternoon meeting, it'll be happier, right? Yeah.
So the two, there's two water-focused assignments, the Kachuma Conservation Release Board and the Kachuma Operation and Maintenance Board, where Sneddon is the primary and Friedman is the alternate. I'm assuming you want to keep it that way?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Yeah. Home for Good. That's a countywide homelessness collaborative, and I'm on it. And there is room for someone else having to do with their activities. Ms. Harmon?
I'm interested, but I have a lot of assignments, so if someone else has an interest, I would defer.
That, that, our new SB Act is really a lot more active than that one, so this is a pretty light assignment, Home for Good. Do you want to be my alternate on that?
Sounds great.
Since it's a, okay. Home for Good, Mario, Harmon. Central Coast Water Authority, Friedman, take the lead, keep the lead?
Yes.
And Sneddon, you still want to be?
Yes, please.
City-County Affordable Housing Task Group, I want to stay on that. Ms. Harmon, do you want to stay on that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Coast Rail Coordinating Council, I want to stay on that. And does anyone want to get involved with improving passenger rail service on the central coast? You know, it might be good to have Mr. Friedman, because I was going to suggest him to be the alternate to SB CAG and APCD, that you came from the county government service, and so you understand those.
So the alternate for the, the Coast Rail Coordinating Council, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's actually an SB CAG appointment, but, yeah, so never mind about that. It would have to be done at the SB CAG level. Community Action Commission, a great organization. Mr. Gutierrez, did you want to stay on that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. LoSan is appointed by SB CAG, and I'm the alternate, yes. Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District and Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. Is the council supportive of Mr. Friedman taking over the alternate position?
Yes.
I'm saying yes. Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District Board, MTD, Mr. Gutierrez is the primary, and Ms. Sneddon is the alternate.
And I would like to let that go.
I as well. I'm willing to open it up for anybody.
So it meets Tuesday mornings, real early in the morning, it's kind of, is it Tuesday morning?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Yeah.
So you kind of have to be an early bird, folks. It's the bus service.
I'll take it.
Great people, okay. A. Gutierrez for MTD?
So it's Tuesdays at eight?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
It's, it's only once a month, though.
Correct.
Right? Thanks, Ms. Gutierrez.
Will you need a different alternate?
Does someone want to be an alternate for MTD? Mr. Jordan?
Sure.
Mr., okay.
Madam Mayor, just a reminder for the council, given the state legislation that's out there, we might someday have an interest in where the transit stops are.
Yeah, that's, we're going to have that discussion, I think. So the South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety, that we've changed the name to the South Coast Youth Safety Partnership, and I'd like to stay on that, and Mr. Gutierrez has been attending the meetings. Did you, you want to stay on it? Yeah, we're planning on going to the meeting tomorrow.
Would you like to be on?
But you have an interest?
Yeah.
I'd like to hand it over. I can still be your alternate.
You let Ms. Gutierrez take the assignment?
Sure.
Okay. There's a meeting tomorrow, I'm not sure, it's kind of quick notice for you, but, okay. League of Cities, we can all get active with the League of Cities, right, Mr. Casey? We all get invited to their activities. U.S. Conference of Mayors, I'll stay on that. So I think that's it. Ms. Clerk, is that, is that everything?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I can ask a couple of quick clarifying questions. For Neighborhood Advisory Council, it's Alejandra Gutierrez? For Police Station Ad Hoc Committee, it's Councilmember Harmon, Mayor Potem Sneddon, and Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez?
Yes.
Okay.
Sneddon, Harmon, and Alejandra Gutierrez.
Perfect. And for PATH Neighborhood Partnership, that's Alejandra Gutierrez?
Yes.
Or is it both?
Both.
Okay. And is one person primary and one an alternate, or both? Just both? Okay, that's great.
Where is that one? Okay, so it's the two Gutierrezes?
And, and I'm sorry, two more, and, and I will be quiet. SB, SB CAG, that's primary, Madam Mayor, and alternate, Councilmember Friedman. And South Coast Youth Safety Partnership, that's primary, Mayor Mario.
Mario and Alejandra Gutierrez.
Perfect.
Except for tomorrow, you said you'd go. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
For the Neighborhood Advisory, it's also Oscar and, okay, yeah.
So there's three on the Neighborhood Advisory Council.
And I'm sorry, that's Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez, Councilmember Oscar.
Oscar Gutierrez and Ms. Harmon.
Very good, thank you very much.
If there's no other discussion, we should make a motion and approve all of that?
I'll, I'll move as, as voted on. I'll move all, all the recommendations.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Jordan, no other discussion, if there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, good. We have our assignments. Number 11, Ms. Clerk. Are they here? Oh, Ms., okay. Ms. Johnson.
Item 11, subject, Public Hearing to Modify the 2015 to 2020 Santa Barbara South Coast Tourism and Business Improvement District. Recommendation, the council, A, hold a final public hearing to modify the 2015 through 2020 Santa Barbara South Coast Tourism and Business Improvement District and declare results of a majority protest proceeding. And B, adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara modifying the 2015 to 2020 Management District Plan of the Santa Barbara South Coast Tourism and Business Improvement District.
Ms. Johnson, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Nina Johnson. I'm the Senior Assistant to the City Administrator. The item before you is the final procedural step in renewing our Tourism Business Improvement District, or T-Bid as we call it. I'm going to just quickly give you an overview of the item before you. By way of background, the cities are allowed, are authorized, under the California Streets and Highway Code, specifically the Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994, to create special benefit assessment districts, where businesses within a defined geographic area pay an assessment to receive specific benefits and services. In this case, the T-Bid is consisting of the City of Santa Barbara, City of Goleta, and the South Coast of the county, and that map on the screen shows the boundaries of the T-Bid. So how this works is the city levies the assessment, collects the assessment revenue from the lodging establishments, and then remits those funds to a nonprofit, to Visit Santa Barbara, to provide the services to those businesses. It was initially formed in 2011 and then renewed in 2014, and then last fall, and this is a year ahead of schedule, ahead of the end of the term, Visit Santa Barbara came to us with petitions from the lodging establishments to renew the T-Bid. And through a number of public meetings and a public hearing last year, the council approved renewing the T-Bid, so a month ago, council conducted a public hearing and confirmed that there was no lack, there was no opposition, and renewed it for, to begin February 1st, so at the end of the month, the renewed T-Bid takes effect. The last step that we have to complete is modifying the existing T-Bid to end at the end of this month. So to end on January 31st, so that the new T-Bid can start on February 1st. We mailed all the lodging establishments notices. We have heard no opposition. So council is here today just to essentially confirm that there's no majority protest. You can modify the existing T-Bid to end earlier, and the end of this month. The dates are all on the screen, so you can see that the current T-Bid then would expire at the end of January. The new T-Bid would start February 1st. So council will just confirm that we have no opposition to that, ending that early, and approve the, the Management District Plan, which is attached to the report, which basically ends the current T-Bid early. I will end in just mentioning that if I'm available to answer any questions, if you have any, and also James Minton, the Vice President of Strategic Planning from Visit Santa Barbara, is here if you have any questions.
Okay, and so for the new council members, we, as our calendar showed, the, the council reviewed this matter. There was some negotiations with the hotels, some of the bigger ones, some of the smaller ones. The hotels are assessed, and then Visit Santa Barbara goes out and does wonderful marketing, very good operating organization, do good work. So this is all culminating now into an agreement, and for us to, to just approve it, right? Because that's our authority under the Building and Professions Code, Streets and Professions Code?
Streets and Highways Code.
Okay. I don't see any lights for questions, and we don't have any public commenters, so a deliberative comment, if you like, or a motion to, what would the motion be, Ms.? To approve the...
To adopt the resolution attached to the report, modifying the Management District Plan.
Second.
Okay, that was Sneddon, Friedman. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks for working so hard on that, Ms. Johnson, and give our regards to Visit Santa Barbara. And we'll close that item and move on to number 12, Ms. Clerk. Which has to do with ADUs.
Item 12, Report on Accessory Dwelling Unit Interim Urgency Ordinance. Recommendation, the council, A, receive a report on measures taken to alleviate the condition that led to the adoption of an interim urgency ordinance limiting application of the city's existing accessory dwelling unit, ADU ordinance beyond January 1, 2020. And B, adopt by reading in full and by a four-fifths vote, an interim urgency ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara extending Ordinance Number 5927 concerning accessory dwelling units for 10 months and 15 days, or until December 17, 2020.
So we have a staff presentation, then, our city planners here, Ms. Brook?
Great, thank you so much, Madam Mayor and Council. As read before you, we are back before you today to discuss the interim urgency ordinance concerning accessory dwelling units. And my presentation will be very brief, I'll just give you some background and then our recommendation from staff. So the purpose of the hearing is to receive a brief status report on interim urgency ordinance concerning ADUs and recommend that you extend that urgency ordinance through December 17, 2020. So by way of background, when we were here with you on December 17th, we provided some highlights of this, the changes in state law regarding accessory dwelling units. And staff found in concerns with potential impacts that that state law would have if we just adopted it without any local amendments that we are allowed under the law. We found that without any local amendments, there would be increased traffic and demand for on-street parking. This would increase evacuation demands, especially in the foothill areas where high fire hazard areas are, and then it would adversely impact historic resources. So based on that, on December 17th, city council found that there was an immediate need to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare. And you adopted an interim urgency ordinance, which temporarily prohibits accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in the foothill and extreme foothill high-fire zones, and on properties containing or immediately adjacent to identified historic resources. And this was all with the intent that staff was preparing to do some additional study in these two areas, and, but we didn't have time to do that between the time that these bills were signed by the governor, and they took effect on January 1st. So we were just asking for a couple more months to be able to study these areas that caused us the most concern. Since January 1st, all other aspects of the state law have been in effect citywide. That urgency ordinance that was adopted by council on December 17th has a period of 45 days, and so it would expire January 31st of this year. The state law requires that we report to you within 10 days of that expiration on what we've done to alleviate the, the public health and safety impacts, and it's been a very short period of time, including the holidays. But we have begun drafting, we had already begun drafting, what we believed would be our recommended local amendments to that, with the exception of data that we're expecting to receive from the Fire Department as they are updating the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. We still expect to receive that data in February, and that will really educate staff's recommendation to you and the Planning Commission about how the state law would best be implemented in the foothill areas of the city. We expect that in about three to four months, we could be taking our draft amendments out for public review to the Planning Commission and Council, amending Title 30, which is the inland zoning ordinance, with the intent that the state law would continue to be effective in the coastal zone. And that's just a matter of the time to prepare and submit an LCP amendment, Local Coastal Program Amendment, to the Coastal Commission, and the ensuing negotiation period we would expect with them. We're not sure it's worthwhile to amend Title 28, but we could, we could certainly have that discussion with the Planning Commission when we propose to them our inland ordinance amendments and Title 30. when we propose to them our inland ordinance amendments and Title 30. So with that, since we don't have local amendments adopted yet regarding ADU, staff is recommending that you extend the interim urgency ordinance. The state law allows this extension through December 17th of this year. We don't expect we'd need all that time. It's just the next chunk of time that the state law allows. And then in doing that, you would need to, again, make those same findings pursuant to the government code that you find that there is an immediate threat to the public health, safety, or welfare. Oops, what's that?
So my first question, then, Ms. Brooke. Was there more presentation? Close it, okay. You, your timeframe is May of this year. That's what I read in our staff report. So you're not looking at using the whole 10 months?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. If we received the data from the consultant in the Fire Department at the end of February, going through the necessary noticing and public hearing process would likely get that ordinance amendment package to council in April and May, and then it becomes effective 30 days after ordinance adoption.
Okay. And then I wanted some clarification. The staff report and maybe one of your slides too references increased on-street parking. My understanding, when we had our discussion, is if there's more cars parked on the street, it would be harder for evacuation and egress. But there's places in the council agenda report that just refer to increased parking. It just needs a phrase which would cause traffic congestion. Because we have parking congestion everywhere, and everybody has to take their share. But I'm just, you know what I'm saying? It has to say, because I don't think the state would accept the fact that, oh, increased densities increases parking. It's parking that causes trouble getting out of the hills, short windy, or narrow windy streets. So I just wanted to be clear about that. Are there any questions, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Brooke, so I got a couple. The ordinance, can it be extended again, or is that the extent of its lifespan?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, I'll save Mr. Lucetana a trip. It can be extended for a total of 22 months and 15 days, or 45 days. So one more extension next year if, for some reason, we would need it.
Okay. And what is happening with people in those zones that had a project in the process or very near the end of the process?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Jordan, so with the council's adoption of the interim urgency ordinance on December 17th, it set that date. As anything submitted after that date would have to abide by the interim urgency ordinance. So any application for an accessory dwelling unit or junior ADU that we had in prior to December 17th can proceed through under the regulations that were in place at that time. Anything we've received since then has been proceeding under the urgency ordinance or else state law if it's not subject to one of those two prohibitions that were set.
Okay. And then I have a question on, I'm sure it's a comment, but I'll phrase it into a question.
Mr. Jordan, can you speak directly into your microphone? Pull it nice and close.
I have a question on the reference near the end of the staff report to fees, the work you're going to do, and you're anticipating bringing fees back on top of the ADU process. And I'm just wondering why that's necessary, say, in comparison to the Accelerate Program Downtown or the whatever we're calling the position over in community development? I don't recall hearing a need to put fees on those. That's just something good government does, and isn't this also? So why would we be talking about burdening housing pursuits with fees after this?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Jordan, that, what you're referring to is in the Budget Financial Section of the Council Agenda Report. And it was explicitly put in there because oftentimes, when legislation comes down from the state, there'll be a phrase, and they're saying this is mandated, and there's no funds that go along with implementing this law. In this case, there is a section of the government code that says that the city can charge fees to recuperate the time spent amending the ordinance. So we have the option of passing that on to the application fees, building permit fees for accessory dwelling units. But that is something that ultimately council would review as part of our fee resolution with the budget if you wanted to alter those otherwise.
We'll have another bite at that apple. Okay. And then the last question is just generally more of a where you're going to go in the future with your work. And that is, so I have no doubt, and I fully support that there's issues with egress up in these zones, and it should be addressed. But we tend to take a map and use a paintbrush this big and just draw color, creating a zone restriction. There's also opportunity sites up there probably that don't have that issue, that have wider roads and stuff like that. Is there any appetite for you guys to actually get down further than the big broad brush as you're extending this and actually allow some areas to continue on and get back out of this ordinance situation, or not?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Jordan, I would like to think so, that we could be a little more exacting in our areas where additional density could be accommodated. And I think part of that we'll understand better when we have our draft amendments before the Planning Commission and Council and we'll understand which sites might be able to accommodate parking, even though we can't mandate it in most cases, and also the travel ways of different roads. And we started to get into that discussion a bit when council adopted our current, now void, but our previously current ADU ordinance. We talked about roadway widths and evacuation routes, and could there be some areas that we might be able to say that's acceptable? So I think this information, I'm hoping that we would receive from the Fire Department's study will inform that discussion.
Very good.
And we can try to carve out areas, because we do want to accommodate housing where it makes sense.
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Right. So Mr. Jordan, you're thinking that if there's properties where a street has four streets to evacuate, that maybe it could accommodate some density. And then there's properties where it's just one little windy road, and better not.
Or whatever we're designating as the foothill or high-fire zone. There might be some wider streets in there. There might be some larger parcels. There, I mean, we tend to, like I say, paint everything with a really big brush. You don't want to get down in the weeds. And I think that is counterproductive both for our goal, and it's also counterproductive with meeting the requirements that the state keeps putting on us every day to meet numbers, so.
And people have property rights, so.
And that, too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Good, good question. That's, I think that's a good question, too. So Councilmember Friedman, question from you?
This is actually pertaining to, both the questions are pertaining to the permanent ordinance and trying to get some direction. So should I wait till after public comment for that, or should I just go forward now?
Can you frame it as a question?
Sure. The first one, it gets in line with that, is we were in contact, I believe we all were, I know I was, someone who had basically done all the work for many months, spent a lot of money, architects and everything regarding an ADU. They didn't realize that we were going to put a ban on them where they lived. And so then the ban came in. They submitted a week later, and so they're in this limbo. And that gets to one of the points that Mr. Jordan raised, if they were in an area where you could have it. So would we be, would there be a path to try to address those specific cases where they may have submitted an ADU between December 18th and now? Where we could try to work with them because they have gone through a process where they spent a lot of time, money, architects on it, or they're just out of luck?
Are you talking about ownership covenant? You said ban on where they could live?
Ownership is second. This is just somebody who had gone through to do an ADU, and they submitted it basically a couple days afterwards, and they're in this area, and now they've spent all this time and money. And then they contacted us and said, what do we do? So I want to see if there's a way, when we bring this back, that we might be able to address a case where somebody had submitted, maybe between December 18th and now. If there's a way to address, it'd be a very limited number of cases.
Mr. Klon.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, it's very hard to do without running contrary to the emergency findings you made. So I would need to know how many properties we're talking about. And then the way the council would get there would be to identify a later effective date. But I generally wouldn't advise it, because I think it does tend to undercut the findings that you made in December.
Okay. Thank you. So then, that was kind of piggyback to Mr. Jordan's. And then my other question regarding when the ordinance comes back to us for permanence is, there's the issue of, prior to our original ordinance, a year and a half ago, we didn't have an ownership covenant requirement. And then now the state, as of January 1st, does not have an ownership covenant on their residence requirement. And so there's this anomaly of all those who got ADUs approved that have these covenants on there over the last 18 months or so. Being that the intent of the state law is not to have those, I'm going to ask my colleagues if there would be some, if we could give some type of direction to explore having a path for those to be removed when the permanent ordinance comes back to us as part of that work. Because I think it gets into a fairness issue for those in that 18-month period.
Well, let's ask first if it's possible. Is that, but we had this discussion last week, or when we had this item before, right?
Right.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, yes, you did have the discussion. And what I said is that in the absence of legislative action by the council as part of this ordinance or a future ordinance, we'd continue to apply those covenants. The reasons are that the circumstances warranting those covenants were in existence when they pulled the permits. This state law that doesn't allow the covenants sunsets in five years. Having said that, it's a policy call for the council, and we can work to help people remove them if that's your direction legislatively.
I'll just say, for the record, I actually supported having the covenants. But now that I see this issue of these people that were following the rules within this time period being affected differently than everybody else, either before or after, I'd like us to explore that as part of the ordinance coming back to us.
Madam Mayor, may I interject? I need some advice from council. So I have a set of plans for an ADU, not yet permit pulled. But as you know, the city puts a covenant on the property way before that. So I have a covenant regarding an ADU on my property. So I'm hesitant to sit here in that conversation, but I clearly needed for the rest of the conversation for a vote. So I need some advice.
Mr. Klon, I think he's asking, you need to recuse yourself?
That'd be the choice that would be toughest.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, I can't advise you without knowing a lot more. If you would like to have a covenant removed, you're directly involved in this legislation. What I'm not sure of, given how many there are, is whether there's a public generally exception. So I have to pass. I can't advise you. That would mean you should recuse yourself.
That kind of advice means step away?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I also do have an ADU with a covenant, so I would like to recuse myself from that conversation as well. Just one piece of advice, we've done this before with other conflicts of interest. Maybe deal with the agenda item today. And then if you want to talk about the covenant issue after voting on that, then Mr. Jordan and I can step out, and you can have the conversation at that point.
We'll take this up after we vote on this item, if we can. Because I'd like to address it today as they're doing the work on the permanent ordinance, rather than having us talk about it when the permanent ordinance comes back to us.
Okay. So I see a couple of lights on, and maybe these couple of people wanted to talk about the covenant. So we'll have that conversation after we go through this particular thing. Did you still have Mayor Protem Sneddon? And I apologize for not letting the public know you're the new Mayor Protem when we were doing our assignment, so, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question about, since it's come up, how the planning interfaces with the Wildland Fire Evacuation Plan? I'm making assumptions that those are going to be interweaved, but if you could just give us some detail on those considerations. Madam Mayor and Mayor Protem Sneddon, well, Rosie Deisty is getting some information from me. She's been consulting on our planning staff with the Fire Department staff on the overall timeline for the project. But this initial collection of data as part of the Wildland Fire Protection Plan, we expect to receive by the end of February from the consultant. The overall planning document that the Fire Department is undertaking has a much longer timeline.
Ms. Deisty?
Madam Mayor and Mayor Protem Sneddon, so the, I believe the evacuation plan you're referring to, I believe, is the one that's already been done. But the same consultant is also working on the Community Wildland Protection Plan update. And so the information they collected before will be folded into that plan. And then we're expecting some draft information. What they're doing first is updating the hazard maps and just looking at what's our current wildland fire hazard and how it affects the city. So we'll be getting that information towards the end of February. There is a first public meeting planned on that project as well on February 20th. So that'll have a lot of information coming out then. And then there's a whole process of going through environmental review and et cetera. So the whole project is scheduled to be complete in around February 2021. But we believe we'll have enough data from the initial collection of data to be able to inform this ADU ordinance.
Thank you. So then just to clarify again, so previously, we weren't clear on all of our records of road widths and passing lanes. And that will be already surveyed and understood before this ordinance is completed? That'll be part of what's informing those decisions, or not?
I would need to consult the work scope of the consultants to know how much they're going into things like road widths on a road-by-road basis. I'm not sure if they're going to have that much detailed data for this plan.
Is there a plan to have that detailed data at some stage before the February 2021? Or that might not even be part of that plan?
Yeah. Like I said, I would need to, the Fire Department was here because they have the consultant's work scope.
And I have a scheduled meeting with them, too. But that's my misunderstanding, because I thought I understood that that was part of that plan, so.
Yeah. It has a date to answer for them, because I don't have the work scope with me.
Thank you. And I apologize, I didn't queue the question with you ahead of time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, we have some public comment. Joshua Newman, you'll be first. You have three minutes at the microphone. Alexa Newman, after him. Sheila Lodge and Patricio Nava.
So Joshua Newman's, my husband, he couldn't make it. He's at home with a baby, so.
So you're Alexa Newman?
Yes, I'm Alexa.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. I'm the person that Eric was talking about. The recent emergency ban on ADUs in high-fire zones placed by the council on December 17th has adversely affected our ADU project. And I'm here to ask the council to amend the ban to start a little bit of a later date so that our project may proceed. Our family lives in a home located at 820 Alston Road. It's in the foothill high-fire zone. We have a one-car garage, 295 square feet, that we'd like to convert to an ADU in conjunction with building a new two-car garage and new driveway elsewhere on the property. I submitted our plans for these permits on December 20th, just days after the ban was placed on ADUs in high-fire zones. And I did not know about the ban at this time. I ask you to allow our project to go ahead, rather than being held until the ban is lifted, which is proposed to be almost a year from now with an optional 10-month extension after that. You are all well-experienced with architectural projects, and you know how much time, effort, and money goes into a permit submittal. As the architect and the homeowner, I have been researching the code, deciding on our best design approach, and preparing these drawings and documents for over six months. The drawings are in accordance to the ADU ordinance that was valid until just days after, just days prior to our submittal to the city, when the council enacted the emergency ban. The possibility of this ban was never mentioned to me in my numerous meetings with the planning staff, which made it impossible to anticipate and prepare for. While I understand issues of ADUs in high-fire zones, I also feel strongly about the council giving some kind of notice or warning prior to making a decision. council giving some kind of notice or warning prior to making a decision that impacts projects so greatly. I implore you to consider amending the ban to start at a later date, to take into account the amount of time it takes to prepare a project for permit submittal and so that our project may proceed. And I think the only thing my husband wanted to add is that we're adding parking, our house has three evacuation routes, two that are very direct, and our project's really, really small, and it's already an existing building. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sheila Lodge, next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Sheila Lodge. Almost all of you know that I've had personal experience with evacuations and with having to wait patiently in what turned out to be a three-quarter, almost a three-quarter mile-long line to get through an intersection while evacuating. One evacuation route was blocked because the fire was already there. This was during the T-fire. And everything went well, people were polite, the intersection, the foothill and Mission Canyon. But all it would have taken is one panicky driver, I was one panicky driver almost did who was too anxious to wait his turn to continue on the foothill. He pulled out and made a U-turn and almost ran into a fire truck. If he'd run into it, the road would have been blocked. That would have been one of the very few access roads out of the Riviera just closed. And that's what happened in the Oakland Fire, panicking drivers running into one another and access and our exit routes blocked. It can happen so easily. We've been very lucky here in Santa Barbara, but we shouldn't rely on luck. In the meanwhile, over 100 ADUs have been added to the high fire zone, the foothill high fire zone, making the situation only worse. So I urge you to adopt and concur with the staff recommendation and make the necessary findings so that we can really get the information that is needed so that the fire master plan can be updated and people who live in that high fire zone will be protected. There's been discussion about some places where there are wide roads. Well, there are some wide roads up above what used to be Sheffield Reservoir in one development where it's very wide. But getting from those areas with the wide roads requires using narrow-winding roads. You know, again, it's a hazardous situation and the city needs to plan properly and adequately for it. Thank you.
Patricio Nava? And Jose Arturo Gallegos will be the final speaker on this item. Welcome, Mr. Nava.
Good afternoon. I want to be very brief. I'm in the same situation that Eric mentioned and our former owner. We went into the process for the ADU. It's a very small project. I submitted on the 19th and aware of this new situation and I'm just asking for some option to continue our project. It's very tough. And I think there are not many cases like mine, maybe three or four, and that's my point. I don't want to be long, but it's the same situation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallegos?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. First of all, Lower Riviera, APS area, Upper Riviera, Mission Canyon, up and back in that area, way overly developed, way overdeveloped. Not only do we have major fires, and I do remember the 64 Coyote Fire, I saw that fire when I was attending Franklin School, 1977, the Sycamore Canyon Fire. I was residing on the corner of Gutierrez and Voluntario. We had to evacuate. We had to evacuate. That's a get out of here. Now, all these years, development, 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 it's getting ridiculous. And no, this shouldn't, okay, we have already proposed ADUs here in the city, which is bad enough as it is, but up in the hills, that's ridiculous. It really is. The safety, the safety of the people living up there. The three major disasters that we have here, fires, floods, and earthquakes. And I've been through my fair share of earthquakes here in Santa Barbara. So the question is, what is most important? To keep the developers happy or the safety of the community here in Santa Barbara, the people who reside here? You know, that's a good question. The interest of the developers or the safety of the community? That's it.
That closes public comment. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to address the issue that came up. I spoke to it earlier and then Mr. Nava and Ms. Newman spoke to it and appreciate you both speaking. And you both articulated better than I did earlier. I'd like to see if there is a way that we could do that. I don't know if there is. That's why I'm bringing it up. In cases where they submitted after December 17th but prior to now where they submitted them and they have all the work that was done, is there a way that we could defer the date but then that put our ordinance at risk? I see their point. I think it's, they followed the process and.
It's like a grace period of some kind?
Yeah, if they have submitted it and not like somebody who hasn't submitted and they submit tomorrow, it would be if they had submitted between December 17th and today or whatever the date, if that would be possible.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, I understand the council's sentiment, but I really am not in a position to help. The findings that you made in December need to be applied fairly and uniformly. And we've heard from two today, I don't know if there are two, five, 10, or 50 who came in after December 17th that had planned on the earlier law. Our answer is that we hope and are devoting the resources to make this wait very short. And you heard staff talk about that. We're talking about a few months. So I don't have a way to help that wouldn't put at risk the ability of the city to defend the ordinance in its entirety. I'm sorry.
Well, I appreciate that. That clarifies that for me. But would this issue with this limited number in this timeframe, is that something that perhaps when we bring the permanent ordinance back and you're talking about something like Mr. Councilmember Jordan brought up, where there are specific areas that get evaluated and one of these might fall in there, could we have that discussion at that time?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, absolutely. The state law says that based on traffic flow and public safety, you can determine where ADUs ought to be. Presumably, that means your decision should be data-driven or evidence-driven. So as Ms. Brook and Ms. Deistie said, as they're looking at it, they're going to look for evidence to support why ADUs ought not be in certain places as opposed to others. So the answer is yes.
Okay. So for the two members of the public that spoke today, both good news and bad news is, for me, I don't feel comfortable addressing it today based on what the city attorney said. But when it comes back, hopefully in the spring timeline, we may be able to address it at that time. So that's where I'm at on that question. And then I'll wait till after we go through this to raise the issue of the covenants.
Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will just echo Councilmember Friedman's sentiments, particularly with regard to being able to make these findings for the extended period so that we can do the work that needs to be done to craft an ordinance that's reflective of the needs of our community and responsive to their concerns. Again, Councilmember Jordan's point is a good one. I would be really excited to see a data-driven process that looks at where these buildings are safe and that takes kind of a fine-tooth comb to this. So I just wanted to lend my support to that and I guess make a motion to make the findings to extend the interim urgency ordinance through to, I forgot the date.
Up to December 17th.
Of course, December 17th, 2020.
And with the necessary findings, Mayor Protem Sneddon has made a second. More comments from you, Ms. Harmon?
Thank you.
Then your turn, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question. I often ask this question about deemed complete and what that would mean in this instance if the permit is already deemed complete. And if you could explain to me why it's different in this case that that project can't proceed where in other cases, when they're deemed complete and we change the law, it can proceed?
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem Sneddon, these are applications that were not submitted until after you acted, so they were not complete.
Thank you. And then I suppose just part of discussion too, as we're looking at this more surgically about where it might be safe to have ADUs or not, I see that there's a possible distinction between the junior ADU that is not changing the footprint, is probably adding one occupant as opposed to a detached ADU that could house three, four people with two cars, especially given the new state laws of how large they can be. So that's something that as we're moving forward, I would like to see the distinction between those two in terms of safety in the high fire and extreme high fire. We had previously talked about junior ADUs in some of those areas, just to keep that conversation going as well.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'll annoy you on the first meeting, but the process says you can extend it up to 10 months and 15 days. Staff's assured us they're going to be back in three or four months. What prevents us from just extending the process through June or July to offer a quicker remedy and carrot for us to accommodate this situation?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, that's absolutely within your prerogative.
So I'll just toss that out, see if it's got any traction. Next week, we could tell staff to do something else that's a higher priority and this does stretch out until the end of the year. So I'm good either way. I think we're in between a rock and a hard space on this, but that number is just picked up out of a maximum. You can extend it, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, you lost me a little bit. Are you going to vote for the motion?
I'm going to vote for the motion. I'm just seeing if there's any traction with reducing the time allowed for staff to do their work and offer some remedy to people who are now sitting in limbo for almost a year.
I feel for the two people, and I understand only two applications have come in, correct? So Mr. Klon was wondering if there was a whole other backlog somewhere, and apparently not.
Right, Madam Mayor. I'm aware of two applications that came in between December 17th and December 20th. Now granted, there are probably other property owners who maybe weren't quite ready to submit but had also invested some money in submitting an ADU application in the high fire hazard area, and they're likely just sitting and waiting to see what happens.
So why don't we be disciplined, Mr. Jordan, and not pile more work on our community planning department and let them get to it by May? And so the next time we get tempted to bump something, we have to remember that they're working hard on this with a couple of residents who have made investments. And we are trying to get through this efficiently and accurately. So I'll be voting for the motion with that sensibility. Mr. Casey, a question?
Yeah, I believe the clerk needs to read the ordinance in its entirety, so before you vote.
Read it in its entirety, okay.
Because of the urgency.
So it'll be a little bit for people waiting for the next item. Thank you, ma'am.
An interim urgency ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara extending ordinance number 5927 concerning accessory dwelling units for 10 months and 15 days or until December 17th, 2020. The city council of the city of Santa Barbara does ordain as follows. Section 1, Findings and Determinations. A, on December 17th, 2019, the city council determined that there was an immediate need to protect the public health, safety, and welfare as a result of recent amendments to state law. These amendments declared the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance, ADU ordinance, to be in its entirety, to be null and void effective January 1, 2020 if the ADU ordinance was not amended to comply with these state law amendments by that deadline. B, an interim urgency ordinance pursuant to Government Code Section 65858 and City Charter Section 511, and identified as ordinance number 5927, was adopted on December 17th, 2019 by unanimous vote of city council members who were present as an interim urgency ordinance. The purpose of ordinance number 5927 is to temporarily prohibit ADUs and J-ADUs in the foothill and extreme foothill high fire zones and on properties or adjacent to properties containing identified historic resources until such reasonable time as a detailed study may be made resulting in amendments to the city's ADU ordinance in order to comply with the new state law amendments. Ordinance number 5927, however, is due to expire on January 31st, 2020 unless it is extended for up to an additional 10 months and 15 days or until December 17th, 2020 or by a four-fifths vote of the city council as authorized under Government Code Section 65858. C, the city council finds and determines that based upon the foregoing, there remains a current and immediate need to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires that ordinance number 5927 incorporated by reference be extended for an additional 10 months and 15 days as authorized under Government Code Section 65858 to allow city staff adequate time to complete its study, that the ordinance must take effect immediately upon adoption, and that the urgency continues and is hereby declared. D, the city has undertaken and will continue to undertake its comprehensive study of how to incorporate the state law amendments into the city's existing ADU ordinance in order to comply with state law during this additional 10 months and 15 days time extension period. E, the city council has held a duly-nosed public hearing in connection with consideration and adoption of this ordinance. F, the city council now desires to adopt this ordinance extending ordinance number 5927 as an urgency ordinance effective immediately and thereby ensure that a reasonable amount of time is provided to the city to ensure that no ADUs or J-ADUs be permitted, approved, or constructed in conflict with any state law as well as the city's general plan zoning and/or development policies or standards as expressed in the current ADU ordinance as well as ordinance number 5927 pursuant to the authority set forth in Government Code Section 65858. G, the city council finds that this ordinance should be read in full and adopted on an urgency basis pursuant to the authority in City Charter Section 511. Section 2, interim zoning adopted. A, the findings and determinations in section 1 are true and correct. B, in accordance with the authority granted to the city council under Government Code Section 65858 and City Charter Section 511, upon the effective date of this interim urgency ordinance, ordinance number 5927 is hereby extended and incorporated herein by this reference for a period of 10 months and 15 days or until December 17th, 2020. Other than these specific findings previously adopted in ordinance number 5927, all other portions of the city's ADU ordinance not referenced in ordinance number 5927 shall be interpreted and applied in a manner consistent with limitations expressed in Government Code Section 65852.2 and particularly subsection 65852.2A7. The city council further directs that the city administrator or his or her designee may make any and all policy determinations and take any and all administrative actions necessary to implement this ordinance in a manner consistent with state law. C, the city council hereby ordains that should any section, paragraph, sentence, phrase, or term of this ordinance hereby adopted be declared for any reason to be invalid, it is the intent of the city council that it would have adopted all other portions of this ordinance irrespective of any such portion declared invalid. D, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon passage by a four-fifths vote of the city council in accordance with Government Code Section 65858. E, the city council finds that this ordinance should be read in full and adopted on an urgency basis pursuant to the authority in City Charter Section 511. F, in addition, the city council finds that on the basis of the whole record and exercising its independent judgment, this ordinance is not subject to environmental review pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act Sections 15060(c)(2) and 15062(c)(3) pertaining to activities and will not result in a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect change to the environment and that are not defined as a project under Section 15378. This ordinance has no potential for resulting in a physical change to the environment directly or indirectly in that it prevents change to the environment pending the completion of the contemplated research and studies.
All right, very good. Thank you for that, ma'am. So if there's no other discussion, we'll take a roll call vote on this item. And we know what the motion is to extend the urgency ordinance.
And that was a motion by Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Mayor Protem Sneddon. Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sneddon?
Yes.
And Mayor Mire?
Aye. Aye. So that's unanimous.
Thank you, staff.
And thank you, staff, for working on that. And I'd like to ask Mr. Casey and Mr. Jordan to leave the room, and you already stated for the record that you are both engaged in ADU ownership issues. Okay, thank you. So Ms. Antles taking over. Mr. Friedman, you'd like to introduce a discussion topic?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try to make this brief. I kind of went over it before, and all I'm seeking is direction from the council today to give to the city attorney to see if this is a possibility on how to address these covenants that were recorded with our ordinance, and to bring that back for us to consider when the ordinance comes back. We're not taking a vote on whether we're going to accept it today or not. It's just to give them direction to give us options.
Thanks. Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Generally, I'm not a fan of retroactivity. I don't typically like actions that are ex post facto, but I think in this case, it seems clear that we have the authority to consider this, or at least hear some options about it. And it seems to me that the obvious intent of this law is to do away with this covenant, and I would certainly be interested in seeing about legal ways, but to really, to cabinet if we can, because it seems like there's some potential to open a can of worms if we're going to start thinking about ordinances and whether we can, you know, undo for 18 months or two years. And I just, I get a little nervous going down that path, so I'm certainly interested in hearing the options if it's something we could consider, but I would like to limit it or perhaps prescribe it stringently so that we don't put ourselves in a position to be having this conversation about every ordinance that we enact moving forward and seeking to make them retroactive on a sort of generalized basis. So that would be my only comment. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Ms. Sneddon?
I have a question for Councilmember Friedman. Is this for the emergency ordinance, or is this for the covenants all inclusive of the entire ADU change?
It's not the emergency ordinance. It's for the covenants that were recorded from about 18 months ago up until that, up until December 17th.
So I just have a question for agendized even to discuss that, since what's on the agenda today is the emergency ordinance.
It's urgency ordinance, too.
Urgency, thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Mayor Portem Sneddon, we had a robust discussion internally and feel that you can certainly give us direction to bring this back in the future if you'd like. We also think you could add it to the urgency ordinance had you so desired, but you've already read that, so you're fine from a Brownax standpoint.
And I suppose I have some questions then about the covenants. I mean, initially, our intention of the covenants, from how I understood it, was to prevent developers from coming in, buying several properties, and immediately putting ADUs on those properties, and which would increase housing, which would be very beneficial. Just reading an LA Times story recently about what's happening in Los Angeles with sort of mystery people buying up multiple properties, which in the end ends up driving the property values up. So it may be counter to what we're trying to accomplish, but also understanding that with this new state regulations, that we can't enforce the covenants. But you just mentioned something I hadn't understood before about sunsetting in five years. Could you give us more detail about what the state mandate actually is?
The accessory dwelling unit law amendments effective January 1 of this year sunset January 1, 2025. So we don't know what the world's going to look like then, and from, you know, thinking this through, if there was a good reason for the owner occupancy covenants the first time through. And the reasons are owner occupancy is less likely to cause speculation, as you mentioned, Mayor Portem, and also perhaps somewhat less likely to result in additional cars. That's not as close a connection. So given that this law is going to go away in five years, it's not an automatic for us as staff to relieve people of those covenants. What we have initially said to the planning staff, and we're trying to put this into an advisory memo so that the people at 630 Garden Street have some clarity, certainly where an ADU is destroyed, will help people remove the owner occupancy covenant, and we're working on other circumstances. But again, in five years, I don't know what's going to happen. The ADU law changes in some unspecified manner.
So it may be possible that in five years, that this five-year period of time is the anomaly, where we're not requiring covenants, but before the five years and after the five years, we do have covenants. My concern is with what it does to rent values also. It's, there's, we talked about it thoroughly when we first enacted it, that in covenant situations that are owner occupied, they tend to keep the ADU rent lower for that unit, because they live there, they want somebody who they're in closer proximity with, and it's different than an outside developer coming in. So for me, for those reasons, I would rather this five years be the anomaly where we can't enforce between when this is enacted to when it sunsets, but then we reassess in five years what the situation is. I'm concerned about the two things. One, the speculative development, and that ultimately, for two different reasons, driving the prices up of the ADUs because of outside developers, and also if it's not owner occupied, the data shows that those are rented for substantially more than when they are owner occupied. So I would be voting, there's not a motion yet, but I would be voting to keep it as-is, keep the ordinance in place as-is, let this sunset ride itself out, and we may have challenges to that covenant over the next months and years with other portions of that legislative platform about ADUs. So I would be voting against that if it were a motion.
So Ms. Harmon, and then Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a follow-up, I guess, question for Councilmember Friedman. So what you suggested, and as I understood this suggestion to bring back options, I guess is how we can phrase it, is we're not talking about removing the covenant, full stop, but we're just talking about the last 18 months, right, and allowing those folks to make use of what is this new state law that says we can't have covenants, right?
Yeah, so the, it's getting, it's convoluted to the conversation, but basically what it is, is prior to our ordinance 18 months ago, you didn't have to have a covenant.
Right.
Then we have this 18-month period where you have to have a covenant. Now, we have this period where you don't have to have a covenant in five years, so you actually have all these anomalies. So what I'm proposing is if there is a will by the council to allow these people who went through the process in these past 18 months, to allow them to be similar to those who came before them and came after them, to have, if they choose to remove the covenant. And again, for the record, I supported covenants for the same reasons you did. It's the state law that changed, and I think there's private property rights here that we, to treat people fairly. So I'm not saying we're going to vote for or not, I just want to have the option, and I think also it would help staff if we, as a council, said yes or no on it, because then they say, well, the council said no, we're not going to have them removed. So I think it could have a benefit to staff if I was making a decision either way. So all I'm asking is the option to consider it, and then they can bring it back, staff can bring it back when they bring the ordinance back, and we can have that more discussion then.
Okay, okay, lights went off. Well, I'm seeing the different perspectives here, and I guess I'd like to hear from staff, not necessarily today, but I would like to have it brought back for discussion, is would it make it easier for you if the covenants were removed, because then there would be no covenants and everything would be the same? I'd like to hear from you. And then the assertion that no ownership covenants would raise rents. You said you read that somewhere. I would need some information about the benefits and the negatives, rather, of the covenants. Yeah, so, well, we need a refresher. It's been a while since, but I'm willing to have a discussion. So there's three of us that wants it to come back as a discussion. Do you want it back as a discussion? Ms. Gutierrez, the Gutierrezes can let us know if they want it to come back as a discussion item?
I do.
Okay.
Is the motion to have it as a discussion item?
There's no motion today. It's just giving staff direction to bring us back to have a discussion.
Well, I always love a discussion.
Okay, so let's have a discussion about that. Thank you. And so we'll close that item. We'll invite Mr. Jordan and Mr. Casey to come back, unless he's gone to happy hour and you're here. Okay. We'll move on to the next item. Ms. Clerk, sea level rise?
Item 13, Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment and Upcoming Adaptation Plan Process.
Okay, we don't need a break. Everybody's good to keep going? Staff, whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Oh, is this on? Oh, good. Good afternoon, Mayor Mario and councilmembers. I'm Melissa Hetrick, Project Planner in the Planning Division, and I'm the Project Manager of the Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan. Here with me today from the Planning Division is Timmy Bolton, Associate Planner, George Buell, Community Development Director, and Renee Brook, City Planner. In February of this year, we are planning to release a draft Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan for the city that recommends actions the city could take to mitigate the impacts of sea level rise. This is the first of three hearings we'll be having on the Sea Level Rise Adaptation So at this first informational hearing, we are going to go through some background related to sea level rise planning. We'll also be going through the findings of a draft Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment that was prepared last year, and then we'll be talking about some next steps. When the Sea Level Rise Plan is released at the end of February, we'll then be returning to you at the end of February for another informational hearing on the potential actions the city could take to mitigate sea level rise and the other recommendations in the adaptation plan. We'll then be starting a public outreach process on the plan for several months, and then we'll come back to you in summer for a consideration of adoption of the plan. So I am not working alone. There's actually an entire staff interdepartmental team working on sea level rise at the city, and they have been instrumental to developing the plan and the process for the Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan. They include staff members from every major city department, including the waterfront, parks and recreation, city attorney, et cetera. There's two major consultants on the plan, environmental science associates and AECOM. There's also a Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan Subcommittee that was formed a year and a half ago that is providing guidance on the plan, and that includes members of the City Council and Parks Planning Commission, Harbor Commission, and Water Commission. Councilmember Sneddon is the chair of that subcommittee, and Councilmember Friedman and Dominguez have been sitting on that subcommittee, and welcome, Councilmember Jordan. Excited to see you. And in addition, there's a number of other stakeholders involved in the, in the planning, including state agencies, the county, and other agencies that we have been collaborating with, and then public stakeholders and community groups. So a little background. So the seas off of Santa Barbara to date have only risen a few inches, and so I get asked a lot, why are we planning now for sea level rise? And the answer is that in the coming decades, the rate of sea level rise is expected to accelerate significantly, and adapting to sea level rise or is going to require significant planning and financing. We have the most adaptation options now while we have some time to plan for the impacts of sea level rise. In addition, several of our planning documents, including the 2011 General Plan and the 2019 Costa Plan, direct preparation of a comprehensive sea level rise adaptation plan. In addition, sea level rise analysis and planning is now required for most permitting, planning, and grants at the state level, and we'll get into that a little bit more. So we are not alone in planning for sea level rise. There are a number of efforts going on in this arena at the federal, state, and local level, and I'm really only going to touch on a few that are significant to our current adaptation plan. In 2018, USGS released what's called COSMO, the Coastal Storm Modeling System, and what this did is take certain amounts of sea level rise and show what kind of hazards would occur because of these amounts of sea level rise, and provided a consistent model for all the local jurisdictions to be using to assess sea level rise hazards, so we're not all using different models. The State of California has done quite a bit of work on sea level rise. They have issued two State of California Sea Level Rise guidances, and the main purpose of those plans is to provide the amounts of sea level rise that each local jurisdiction should be planning for, and to provide a methodology for preparation of adaptation plans. And our adaptation plan will be closely following that guidance. They've also, the state has also issued a number of other guidance documents, and they have also provided a number of grants for planning for sea level rise, in addition, including local coastal program sea, sea level rise grants that, to the many jurisdictions you can see on the, on the screen, including the City of Santa Barbara, our Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan is partially funded through one of those grants. So as far as state requirements, again, there have been a number of executive orders and legislative action on this issue, but it's kind of the most recent ones were Executive Order B 3015, which was passed in 2015, requires the State of California to consider sea level rise in all planning and investment decisions, and that ends up trickling down to the city in a number of ways, through grants and permitting and planning. AB 1691 passed in 2013 and addresses the offshore areas of the state, and it requires the local trustees of state titans, of which the city is one, to assess how they propose to address sea level rise at harbors, beaches, et cetera. So this is relevant for the management of our harbor and Sternsworth. And in addition, I mentioned that for most state permits now, you, in order to get a permit, you need to assess sea level rise as part of that permit, and that applies to the coastal development permits that we issue, in addition to Coastal Commission, and PDS permits for our wastewater plant and other state permits. And all of these analyses have to be consistent with the State of California Sea Level Rise So there are also a number of efforts going on regionally. The county, several years ago, released a vulnerability assessment. They are in the process of developing an LCP amendment. They are doing a comprehensive safety element update that is looking at not just sea level rise, but other climate changes. And then they will be launching a Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan in a few years. They also have formed a Santa Barbara County Climate Collaborative, of which the city is a member. SB CAG has, is also in the process of developing their own Sea Level Rise Plan that's going to look at major transportation networks. The City of Glita released a vulnerability assessment and fiscal impacts report several years ago. City of Comptaduria just released a draft coastal vulnerability and adaptation report as part of their general plan update process. And there are another, a number of other efforts going on at the regional level. So the city really began considering sea level rise back in 2011 as part of the general plan update, and the 2011 General Plan, 2012 Climate Action Plan, the 2013 Safety Element, and the 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan, all direct and the 2017 hazard mitigation plan all direct the preparation of a more comprehensive Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan. In addition, in 2015, a Guelita slough area Sea Level Rise and Management Plan was approved that addresses the airport area. And so the adaptation plan that is being released in February doesn't actually address the airport area. That's being considered under this other process with all the jurisdictions involved in the Guelita slough. And then in 2019, we certified and updated coastal land use plan. And this includes interim policies to address sea level rise as part of coastal development permitting. And so those policies are in effect for as long as we are working on this comprehensive Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan. So we began the comprehensive adaptation plan process at the beginning of 2018. And at the end of 2018, we released a vulnerability assessment. And that is really diagnosing the problem. It describes what would happen if we do nothing. There was a robust public outreach period on the plan. And following that public outreach period, we began development of the adaptation plan that we're going to be releasing in February. And that provides a framework for planning for sea level rise. It analyzes in detail adaptation options such as seawalls, beach nourishment, pretty much casts a huge, very wide net, looking at a number of adaptation strategies. It considers economic and fiscal impacts. And it really identifies in detail near-term priorities or near-term actions. And what I mean by near-term is for the next 10 years that the city could take. And then it considers more broadly triggers for action in the mid and long term. Once the adaptation plan is considered by council, we'll be moving into the implementation phase. And what that would look like is basically taking the near-term action list and further prioritizing that list and identifying potential costs, funding options, timelines, required resources, and responsible staff associated with all those actions, and developing a five-year implementation plan that we would then put in motion. The city would also start a shoreline monitoring program in conjunction with our regional partners. And as we are monitoring and reach certain thresholds, we would take actions as appropriate. And then we're envisioning reevaluation of the overall adaptation plan every 10 years. So moving into the findings of the draft Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment. Again, this is available on our website, www.santabarbarca.gov/slr. It's also available at the city offices. So there are many factors that affect the rates of sea level rise, including such things as how the Antarctic ice sheet melts and ocean circulation patterns, how the ocean is expanding and thermal expansion, vertical land motion. And what this means for us is that sea levels around the world are rising at different levels. So it's not a bathtub. It's not all rising at the same amount. It's rising at different levels in different areas. The other thing it means is that it's very difficult to predict when sea level rise is exactly going to occur. So when exact amounts of sea levels are going to occur. So I'm sure you've seen the headlines, this study, that projection, there's changes to that idea. Oh, it might be coming sooner. Oh, it might be coming later. So what happens is luckily, the city is not in charge of picking what amounts of sea level rise to plan for. The state is doing that. And what they do is every five years, can be in a technical working group. And they basically take all the studies, all the new projections from around the world, and pick which levels each jurisdiction in the state should be planning for. And so this is the graph for the Santa Barbara area that the state released in 2018. And what it shows is the range of sea level rise projections for the city. And the lowest orange line is the most likely scenario. And the range goes all the way up to the red line, which is the least likely scenario. So the state recommends planning for the middle line, which is the medium risk blue line. And those levels are 0.8 feet by 2030, 2.5 feet by 2060, and 6.6 feet by 2100. And those projections are fairly conservative. But as you can see, especially moving out into the longer periods of time, the range of possibility becomes a lot bigger. And so especially with new information coming in all the time on the sea level rise projections, the city is developing our adaptation plan to be based around planning for amounts of sea level rise as opposed to when exactly they may occur. So the vulnerability assessment took a look at a number of coastal hazards that could be exacerbated by sea level rise. And I just want to go through these terms because they kind of get thrown around a lot. But I don't think people actually know exactly what they mean sometimes. Tidal inundation, that term means the regular high tide that happens not on storm events but just on like any regular day. There's shoreline erosion. And what we mean by that is shoreline erosion year to year, not shoreline erosion within a year. There's bluff erosion, which we've all seen out at Shoreline Park and other places. There's storm flooding, which is the flooding of inland areas from the ocean infiltrating into inland areas during extreme storm events. There's storm waves, which are during storm events where the waves are actually crashing, where there's actually accelerated motion of waves. And then the vulnerability assessment also looks at low-lying areas that are inland, that aren't directly connected to the ocean, but which could become more flood-prone in the future because of rising groundwater levels as a result of sea level rise. So these are the maps that are included in the vulnerability assessment. And I believe you have these maps as attachments to your agenda report. This is the west side of the city, which primarily is a bluff area, as you know, from Leadbetter Beach to Sea Love Lane. On this map, the long-term bluff erosion is in orange and yellow. And this is at 0.8 feet of sea level rise, so around 2030. It's really not that much different from our existing hazard now. We have bluff erosion hazard now. This is basically the same map. By 2.5 feet of sea level rise, you'll see that bluff erosion moves backward. It hits Shoreline Drive in a few locations, down by Leadbetter Beach. Several private properties along the bluff are affected. And at this point, 2.5 feet of sea level rise, it's expected that bluff erosion rates would have increased by about 40% above existing rates. At 6.6 feet of sea level rise, bluff erosion has hit Shoreline Drive in multiple locations along the Mesa and Cliff Drive in the vicinity of Sea Love Lane. It's also anticipated that bluff erosion rates would have increased by about 140% by this time. So this is the east side of the city, the waterfront area, the low-lying area. Again, this is the map for 0.8 feet of sea level rise. This is very similar to the existing conditions. So we already have hazards in this area. The light aqua area is tidal inundation. So again, regular high tides go into those areas. The navy blue are where we get storm wave, we get wave action during extreme storm events. So you know, the 100-year storm. And the other blue is where we get storm flooding due to high wave events during storms. So moving into 2.5 feet of sea level rise, the impacts really are still contained to the south side of Shoreline Drive and Cabrillo Boulevard. There would be increased erosion and flooding at our public properties that are south of Cabrillo. And by 6.6 feet of sea level rise, that's where we see the impacts extending well beyond Cabrillo Boulevard. And in this, and on this map, again, the aqua is tidal inundation. And then the dark blue is storm flooding, so flooding during 100-year wave events. So some might recognize this as our FEMA flood area now. So right now, this area on this map floods now during high rainfall events. The difference is north of Highway 101, it's projected that the depths of flooding would not be deeper than occur now. But the frequency of flooding would be a lot more frequent because it would be flooding not just during extreme rainfall events but during extreme high wave events, if that makes sense. South of Highway 101, the flooding would be happening on a regular basis due to high tides. And in addition, flooding during extreme storms would be deeper than it is now and then also more extensive. And again, this is the map if we take no action. So the vulnerability assessment considered impacts.
We have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
You seem like you were at a pausing point. Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, to go back to that image, so correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that the area where Marborg and Lash and all those other industrial facilities are located?
Where's south of Highway 101? Yes.
So just talking about how this could potentially get worse as the years go on with sea level rise. Doesn't this pose a danger that when it floods, that those toxic areas and materials that they're processing there could flood into the neighborhoods, the residential area? Should we start being conscious of possibly try to get them to relocate?
So one of the things that should be considered as part of the adaptation plan process and planning may be going forward is where we are locating industries that have hazardous materials and how those hazardous materials are stored. If they are stored properly and designed properly, that could not be an issue. But one consideration also for that area, that really is the historic El Estero that was filled after the 1929 earthquake. And so a lot of that mapped area was filled with debris from the 1929 earthquake. So there are already hazardous issues out there and that we deal regularly with, with the state and federal agencies.
Sorry, what was the last part?
So right now, we have, that area is filled with, was previously filled with debris from the earthquake from 1929. And so we regularly collaborate with state and federal agencies on cleanup and stuff in that area. So, yeah.
Okay.
So later on in your presentation, you will talk about moving things or like? Mr. Casey?
It's just a little scary to know that it's historically been toxic and it continues to be so.
These maps are daunting on a lot of different policy issues. This is a 2100, give or take, event, so we've got some time to start planning. But that's what, yes, there are a number of ways you could look at these maps and come up with a lot of very complicated public policy issues that we're going to have to start addressing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gutierrez. Thanks, Ms. Hetrick.
So the vulnerability assessment looked at a number of impacts to various public and private assets as listed on this slide. And I'm really just going to go through a few key ones. So one of the things we looked at was transportation networks. As I mentioned, by 2.5 feet of sea level rise or 2060, Cabrillo Boulevard and portions of Shoreline Drive could be affected. But again, the impacts are predominantly south of those streets. By 6.6 feet of sea level rise, we could potentially see flooding of US Highway 101 near the Bird Refuge during storm events. The railroad would be impacted by tidal inundation. And Cabrillo Boulevard and Shoreline and Cliff Drives are impacted in several locations. With regard to beaches and recreation, the situation on the west side of the city, in the bluff areas, is hard because with rising sea levels, there's really nowhere for the beaches to move back. So essentially, with sea level rising, you essentially create a bathtub effect against the bluffs. And so with sea level rise, there is a lot of beach loss projected on the west side of the city. It's projected that by 2.5 feet of sea level rise or 2060, that we are likely to lose 80% of our beach area on the bluff side of the city, the west side of the city. And by 2100 or 6.6 feet of sea level rise, we would likely lose all access to the beaches in the bluffs areas of the city. The waterfront area fares better. And we really are lucky to have our harbor and breakwater, which retains sand on our waterfront beaches and will continue to do so. So without doing anything, the beach loss in the waterfront area is less. It's at 2.5 feet of sea level rise, it would be about 30%, and that's mostly on East Beach. And at 6.6 feet of sea level rise, the beach loss would be approximately 60%. And again, just looking at this map and realizing that 70% of our shoreline is publicly owned, you can imagine there's quite a bit of potential impact to our parks and other recreational resources. So harbor and Sterns Wharf, right now, are already vulnerable during storm events to wave action. It's just kind of a factor of being built in the ocean. And Sterns Wharf currently does experience damage occasionally during extreme storms. I'm sure you guys have heard of damage occurred at Moby Dick and other, at other times in the past. So with sea level rise, the issue isn't so much that the regular tides hit the wharf deck. It's more that as the sea levels rise, it just becomes more likely that a storm would damage the wharf. And by 2.5 feet of sea level rise, it's anticipated that without raising the wharf or reconstructing it, that it would have likely already been damaged during a storm. At the harbor, again, similarly, during high wave events, the existing breakwater is or overtopped now. And we have plans for that. Sometimes storm flooding comes into the harbor during big wave events. So again, similar condition, as sea levels rise, that's just going to start happening more frequently. In addition, most of our marinas only have about one foot left on their piles. So that's something that as sea level rise, we'll have to raise the marinas. By 2.5 feet of sea level rise, without raising the breakwater or raising the sidewalks around the harbor, there would be tidal inundation in some of the parking lots north of the harbor. And functioning of the harbor would be limited. By 6.6 feet of sea level rise, the harbor, without reconstruction, would be permanently inoperable. That's, so the harbor really is at the front line of these impacts. And so you'll see with the adaptation plan that the near-term recommendations are fairly detailed with regard to the harbor because it's really one of the areas where we need to start looking at raising the breakwater, raising the marinas, raising the sidewalks, and things like that sooner than later. So with regard to our water and wastewater infrastructure, our two major assets in this area are the desalination plant and the El Estero wastewater treatment plant. area are the desalination plant and the El Estero wastewater treatment plant. And those, those happen to be on a higher piece of land. As you can see, by 6.6 feet of sea level rise, they're essentially surrounded by tidal inundation, and so at that point, it would be pretty hard to operate them. And they are not, the plants themselves are not impacted at 2.5 feet of sea level rise. But really, what factors especially into the wastewater treatment plant is the piping that goes into the plant. So the way our wastewater system works is it's a gravity-fed system. So all the wastewater comes down from the city into various mains that are collected that are under the beach south of Cabrillo Boulevard. And then those mains bring the wastewater up to the El Estero wastewater treatment plant. So, or Water Resource Centers, sorry. And so by 2.5 feet of sea level rise, it's projected that without changing the location of those mains, that the El Estero treatment plant would not be operable a lot of the time because essentially all, there'd be a bunch of seawater getting into the mains, and that the plant's not designed to treat a bunch of seawater and a bunch of extra water levels. So again, this is an area in our near-term actions as we move into the adaptation planning process, that we would be looking at sooner or later, moving those bigger lines that are under the beach or waterproofing them. So just to summarize, by 2.5 feet of sea level rise, 173 parcels, public and private, could potentially be affected if nothing is done. Of those, 149 could potentially be impacted by regular tidal conditions, and 24 would potentially be impacted only during storm conditions. By 6.6 feet of sea level rise, the number jumps a lot. 1,241 parcels could potentially be impacted, and about a third of those would be impacted by regular tidal conditions, and then another two-thirds would be impacted during storm So this information is overwhelming, as Mr. Casey mentioned, and I think it's important to remember that adaptation planning for the city really is going to, it's just beginning. We are just beginning a process of planning for adaptation to sea level rise. We are not going to be able to answer all the questions now, and it's really going to be a process. Adapting is going to require a phased approach. Dynamically changing conditions are going to require different adaptation strategies at different times. So it really behooves the city to keep all of our options open, because 10 years from now, 20 years from now, we may think differently about different adaptation strategies. In addition, there's just a lot of rapidly developing information and unknowns at this time, where new information is coming in all the time. Among those are the, the timing and rate of sea level rise, how other climate changes might, such as changes in rainfall patterns, might interact with sea level rise. In addition, there's a lot of work being done on the feasibility of engineering options such as levees. Really, those options have not been applied to the California coast and change conditions, and there's a lot of work being done on how they might be. In addition, our current laws, like property laws and state laws, were really written, given in mind a static condition. It wasn't really envisioned when most of our laws were written that there would be changing conditions such as sea level rise. So there's a lot of questions about how many of these laws might be interpreted in the face of the impacts of sea level rise, and so that is going to be an interesting area for the city to follow. In addition, programs such as FEMA really focus on existing hazards, so existing areas that flood and have flooded in the past. They don't really focus right now on future hazards, and so that's another area that will likely be changing significantly. And again, we are, we are looking at how the state and federal government will be reacting and how that might change in the future. So again, just to emphasize the phasing of our sea level rise planning, we have in place now development review standards in the 2019 Coastal Land Use Plan that assess sea level rise hazards as part of the coastal development permitting process. And those will remain in place as we are doing the comprehensive adaptation plan. We'll be releasing in February the more comprehensive adaptation plan that's going to recommend in detail near-term actions for the city, and then look more broadly at mid- and long-term actions. Then we'd be moving into five-year implementation planning and shoreline monitoring, and then it's envisioned that we'd reevaluate the overall adaptation plan every 10 years. So in the near term, this is our schedule. As I mentioned, we'd be releasing the public review draft adaptation plan at the end of February. We'll have another council informational hearing at that time to go through the recommendations on adaptation. That will be an informational hearing. Then we'll launch a several-month-long public outreach period. We'll be bringing the plan to the city's various board and commissions, having a public workshop, meeting with stakeholders, and there'll be a public comment period. And then the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee, after all that, will consider a recommendation on the adaptation plan to forward to city council. And then in summer, the council will consider adoption of the drafted adaptation plan and initiation of the implementation phase of the project. So again, this is our website, and we are here for any questions.
So we're on schedule with the Coastal Commission, right? They gave us a little bit of funding, and this is all part of our local coastal plan, so our schedule's good with them, I guess, or?
Yes, Mayor Mario. We are in schedule for giving them a plan when it is due to them, and they have been, we have been consulting with them all along.
Mr. Casey, I was looking at the budget information, so in the next budget cycle, will you be looking at ways to fund more of this? It looks like different departments are pitching in. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the part of the implementation plan will be looking at some of the fiscal impacts about how to fund some of the adaptation strategies and such, so yes.
Okay. Any other questions? We have some public comments speakers. Mr. Friedman, go ahead.
Just have one, is just to clarify, so the draft adaptation plan that's coming, can you just talk to whose draft that is, and then what role we had as a Sea Level Rise Subcommittee that we had or we didn't have, so people understand the whole process?
So Mayor Mario, Councilmember Friedman, the Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment was prepared by a consultant ESA, and then the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee has reviewed that. The draft adaptation plan, we felt it was very important before the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee really considered that plan, to hear public comment on the plan. And so the draft is going to be released in February, really is a consultant-prepared draft. In addition, it's been reviewed by the staff and the Marborg and all team, but the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee has not gone through and reviewed every detail, has not seen the draft. And so they'll be reviewing it along with everyone else as part of the public outreach period, and then they'll be providing their detailed comments on it after the public outreach period, and then providing a recommendation on a revised draft that we then do after that.
Any other questions? So it's you, Mr. Friedman, Ms. Nennen, and Mr. Jordan are now the Subcommittee. Great, okay. Ms. Hauser, you're going to be up first, Hillary Hauser, Allison Thompson, and Phil Walker for our public comment. Come on up. Do you have visuals too?
We have just a few pictures.
Okay.
Allison Thompson from Heal the Ocean, she tries to keep me from doing this kind of stuff.
No, we want to hear you. Go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, and members of City Council, it's such an honor to be here at your first council meeting with a new council member. Thank you for having us. Allison, we're going to just show you a couple of pictures. And first of all, thank you, Melissa, for all the work you're doing. She's had to put up with me barging into her Subcommittee meetings and ranting and raving. Heal the Ocean has been on this for quite a while, the sea level rise having to do with the, you know, with the climate change. And we're very, we're frustrated with this sense of planning the assessment to plan the assessment to think about the assessment.
Can you speak right into the microphone? Ms. Hauser, right into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did that, nobody hurt me? Say, planning the assessment to make the plan of the assessment. So there are some practical things that we could do right now that this city could make a list about. The, the airport, the Cabrillo Boulevard, and so forth. But let's go, Ally, show the harbor. You've seen some pictures of the harbor out of Melissa's presentation. I've lived in Santa Barbara long enough where storms have come over that breakwater, and yes, even if it's, even if it's raised, we have to remember that climate change is bringing worse storms. It isn't the usual tidal stuff. It's, we've, we've been around when boats have been torn apart, torn off their mooring. So the next one, during high tides, we send a drone out. This is Miramar Beach, which of course, not the city. The next slide is Sandy Land. Okay, this is not the city either, but it brings up a point that Councilman Gutierrez brought up. This is Sandy Land and Sandpoint, and they're part of the sewer project that we brought in pipes to the Rincon. And right now, if those pipes weren't there, their wastewater would be in their living room, because as been pointed out, when the sea comes in, the groundwater comes up. And these houses are almost, they're in danger of becoming stranded on a strip, a spit, both of them. During the last King Tide, it breached over on the other end of Sandy Land. And so into this conversation, we have to bring the realtors. They've got to be thinking about, you know, what, not their bottom line, but the, but the, what their client's safety and so forth. But also, in terms of what Councilman Gutierrez said about toxic groundwater, yes, it's our waterfront has it. We've been working with the regional board about cleaning up property after property after property. So we have to do that, but we can't allow septic systems to be built on the beach, and we're still trying to get at a group that has septic systems on the beach. And so we need, there are practical things that we can do to prepare for this, for this thing. Next, sea level rise. So this is really important to me, because in 2015, Goleta did this coastal hazard vulnerability assessment, and they, they said, okay, in this much time, you've got to move these manholes. In this much time, you've got to move the vault, and they put general numbers on it, prices of what it would be, and then by this much time, you have to move the whole plant somewhere. But they were pretty right on, right, they did that in 2017, and in 20, in the storm of 20, no, the study with 2015, in the storm of 2017, the vault fell in. And they had to get emergency permits from the Coastal Commission to prop it up with rock. So we, things like this, we don't have to do the plan about the assessment of the plan. We have the airport, which is already flooding. This is King Tide 2019. That's the, that little red square right there is the end of the airport runway, and I think we all know that the airport was built in the slough. So of course, we want to keep our airport going, but we don't need to be spending tons of money on new plaster or whatever, you know, decorating the place, when maybe we should be thinking about saving that money to get a monorail to Santa Maria. I don't know if you saw the news press this weekend, United is now flying into Santa Maria with places going east. We may have to go elsewhere to fly in and out. This is the Goleta Slough in the coastal flooding 2100. Okay.
Well, you've used up your time and the time that Ms. Thompson gave you. If you could wrap up your, sorry, time goes fast, huh?
What?
I know, I know.
I know, it always happens. Excuse me, I'm just going on. I would like to see some practice, a list of practical things that we can do now in terms of the airport, Cabrillo Boulevard, and the Funkstone Planning Division should not be allowing the building of buildings in high groundwater where they're going to be flooded in 30 years. So if the city planning and building department could develop some regulation about what they approve right now.
Okay. Well, you make a good point, and the staff is going to do public outreach, and I assume the realtors and Marborg and Heal the Ocean will be engaged in our conversations? Okay. Thanks a lot. Thanks for being here. Thanks for waiting. You've been here all afternoon, haven't you?
No, we've just been having fun at your first meeting.
You like it? Okay. Mr. Walker, you're our final speaker. Come on up.
Good afternoon again, Madam Mayor and Madam Mayor Pro Tem. In interest of full disclosure and a disclaimer too, I was a treatment plan operator at El Estero from December 1981 to December 2006. Okay. It was probably late February because there was still some daylight left when I drove down Cabrillo Boulevard. Fortunately, I had a Dodge Coronet. It was a former Oxnard PD vehicle, and that had the full heavy-duty suspension of 400 in it, and the waves were actually breaking over Cabrillo Boulevard, and it was pushing me from side to side, but I managed to get to work, unfortunately. And I got into work, and the first thing we did, there was just, it was right at shift change at 7:00 PM. It was a 12-hour monthly rotating shift at that point. We called in Bill Moorhead, the treatment supervisor, and he came in very, very responsive, and he was a tall gentleman, probably somewhere near Councilman Gutierrez or Councilman Friedman's or Councilman.
Jordan.
Jordan's stature. And he said, Phil, get on some hip waders. So I got in some hip waders, and next thing I know, I was popping manhole covers on the main interceptor into the wet well at El Estero. Everything was flooded. The Laguna Channel pump station had failed, so the water was pouring out of the Laguna Channel and onto the El Estero property adjacent, and I was up to my belly button in water popping manhole covers, trying to figure out why the wet well was flooding. Okay, it turns out, the outfall is limited. I think the hydraulic capacity is something like 30 million gallons per day, 30 MGD, and we figured it out. We were pumping 50 MGD to the plant. All the sewer collection system was surcharged, and it was just unbelievable. Okay, immediately, we lost the viability of the screenings, or the, yeah, the screenings removal systems, the bar manuters, and the wet well. And the wet well didn't look like the wet well anymore. It looked like the Colorado River on full flood stage, you know? It was just unbelievable. The Patterson, the original pumps from 1978, they were workhorses, and they kept pumping everything through, but the entire fluid process units were so surcharged, so full were the tanks, they were flowing down the elevated outside stairs like giant cascades. So it was a big, big concern in the So it was a big, big concern, and the whole thing is El Estero is, like was said, the site of the old estuary. That's why it's called El Estero.
Thank you.
Yeah. There is a big concern. It'll take a lot of research, and Ms. Hauser said it very well. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. That closes public comment. And Heal the Ocean, we found your packet. So if you didn't get to finish, we'll take a look at what you've submitted. So Mr. Casey, this is an informational presentation, and I don't think we need to take a vote, but it's time for discussion. Mr. Friedman, and then Mr. Jordan, and then Ms. Nitten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to thank staff for the, not only the excellent presentation tonight on the vulnerabilities of our community, but also the work that you've done with the subcommittee over the past year-plus. This is overwhelming when you see what's at stake if we don't plan properly. And I remember our first meeting, you had seen all these before we had. And for all my colleagues, if you're feeling overwhelmed, we all were there. And I remember Ms. Hetrick, she specifically said, you know, you might need therapy when we first go through there, or something to that effect, you know? And we, the first meeting was more of like a group therapy of like, what do we do? And it is overwhelming. But then you just take a breath and you do what we've done over the past year, and we're going to continue to do with the community, because we don't have another choice, and we love our city and this area in particular, the coast. One thing I do want to bring up, because there's an elephant in the room, is the light blue line. And it's, there's a lot of people remember that, but I, someone recently gave this to me, and it's a memo of the light blue line. And the light blue line was important in our community because it initially got this conversation going around 15 or so years ago, maybe 10 to 15 years ago. And it was part this discussion, but it's also part of an art project, and art does that. It's controversial, and it gets that going. But a lot has changed since the light blue line. And particularly, there's more data. We have over a decade more of data globally and even locally, and refined modeling. And simply the passage of time has allowed us to have a better assessment of what's going forward in this century, and included the hottest decade on record. Just this past week, a report, actually, I think it was yesterday, was released on ocean warming. And there's a part of it, and I want to read it because we're talking about sea level rise, and in particular, how important oceans are. So human emitted, this is from the study, "Human-emitted greenhouse gases have resulted in a long-term and unequivocal warming of the planet. More than 90% of the excess heat is stored within the world's oceans, where it accumulates and causes increases in ocean temperature. Because the oceans are the main repository of the Earth's energy imbalance, measuring ocean heat content is one of the best ways to quantify the rate of global warming." And the report then goes on to state that the past five years have been the hottest recorded ocean temperatures. 2019 was number one, 18 was number two, 17 number three, 2015 was number four, and 2016 was number five. And this gets Ms. Hauser's point about the level of the storm. It's not going to be our typical storms. They're going to be more intense. The reason that 2016 was farther down the list is that was in El Niño year. So a lot of that excess heat, and again, I got this from the study, a lot of that excess heat that's in the oceans was released during the El Niño, which causes these greater storms. So it's an important point that Heal the Ocean raised. And then today was important conversation because it gave us our vulnerability assessments of what's at stake if we don't act. And it's also important for the community to understand that we're basing the action items on, and Ms. Hetrick said this multiple times today, on trigger points, not time, because the level of sea rise could go faster or slower, but we react to what the sea level rise and the conditions of the day are, and we're going to be reassessing every five to 10 years. So that's where we base our actions on, is what the actual conditions are, and not just on, we suppose it's going to be a foot here or two feet there. And that allows us to really comprehensive plan. And then one thing I do want to address, and I've talked to others, and I see articles about here, is skepticism about climate change and global warming. And it's good to continue to ask questions and challenge the science. It's always good to do that. But for those who are skeptical, we need your help because to plan for this too. And so I would just say that with hundreds of billions of tons of greenhouse gases emitted into the atmosphere over the past two centuries, and thousands of studies have confirmed it, is it reasonable to plan for a future in which climate change and global warming and sea level rises? Is it reasonable? And we have 8 billion people on the planet and approximately a billion in coastal areas, so it is reasonable to make these plans. And then finally, when we look at the, what's at stake here, there's a lot of our treasured assets, public access to the beach, a lot of our critical infrastructure, public health and safety. And if you want to find a way, a quick way to make any community unlivable, it's to have a wastewater treatment plant that doesn't work. So there is no Plan B if you don't have one. And that is one of the most important things we're going to be dealing with, is how to protect, not only our infrastructure, but that piece of our critical infrastructure. So I'm looking forward to the challenge ahead. Like I said, it is overwhelming, but I think we're up for it. I think our community is up for it, and appreciate having a great staff and a great community. And a lot of our boards and commissions are going to be opining on this, and look forward to the challenge ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to echo to the, probably the Herculean effort of staff, and I know a couple of planning commissioners were on the sea level rise, and you had some other boards or commissioners too. And I just know you guys have been doing a lot of work. To me, this is probably be out, maybe outside my, well, will be outside my lifetime, but it's probably going to be the equivalent of the largest single equivalent of a capital project's life in the history of the city by the time you look to 2100 or whatever dates those are. And the complexity of the moving parts, combined with the multiple choices you have to make, you know, what, which one of, which one of those scenarios that you put up there is going to happen or not happen, or which other scenario will appear, just makes it such a moving, moving type of dynamic that I think it's, two points I want to make. One, I think, is that we're all on the same page in this room, holding hands on this issue, and that we know how to talk the talk and support this, whether it's sitting up here or in the line at the supermarket. And so one suggestion I would have there, we've done this with Planning Commission in the past, that's been very successful on large projects, which I would call this a large 80-year project, is that, I'll volunteer, but if you want to reach out to other council members too, and I think other key board and commission members, is that you schedule those, you guys don't know what I'm talking about, you schedule one or two people to come in and walk through key points and talking points of the project. And so you just kind of take that, take that scenario and apply it to this as we move forward, both with looking at what the potential things that could happen, and then you try and transition that to, here's, here's all the choices of what we could do if some of those things happen. I just think there's so many moving parts on both of those, and you get lost in the details or lost in what's important. I just wrote down trigger points. That's like, I'm going to burn that into my, you know, my head. It's not a timeline thing, it's a trigger point thing. And just as another example of that too, to me, I think you also mentioned, Eric, the people out there that want to contest this, and there's going to be those, and I think we have to work really hard to get past that. To me, it's really important to use wording that supports exactly what we're doing. And I'll just give you as an example, there's multiple spots and wording in the, in the staff report where it uses words, I'll paraphrase, that by, if six feet of sea level rise occurs, Cabrillo Boulevard could be underwater. Clearly, if six feet of sea level rise occurs, Cabrillo Boulevard will be underwater. And then we can talk about how we're going to discuss the choices to handle that in the next stage, in the, in the, in that next, next part next month. But I hesitate to read sentences like that where you say, if six feet occur, then something could happen. You're giving, you're giving me an out on both ends of that equation where the if, if you want to have that argument or discussion, I'm okay with that. But if it happens, there's certainly a consequence that can be measured now. We need to nip that in the bud, that, you know, it's not just the if, not just the could, but it will happen if that happens. And I, again, I, to me, this will be, in my lifetime, probably, the next five years or nine years, the largest single project equivalent of a capital project the city has ever seen. The burden possibly on the city in terms of whatever the choices are, are going to be some of the toughest choices the city has ever seen. And I too am looking forward to that challenge. And I agree with Ms. Hauser that haste on some choices that we can make is certainly called for, rather than continuing to walk through this at a polite, sort of timid rate. I think, I think the, the consequences are imminent, and the sooner we get out in front of those, the easier it is, the longer we wait, the run-up to trying to catch up will be much tougher. So thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Nitten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really cannot commend Ms. Hetrick and Mr. Bolton and staff for what you bring to us at every Sea Level Rise Committee meeting. And each one of these individual bullet points was something that was the topic of a fully vetted discussion. To that point, I do want to mention the role of the Sea Level Rise Committee is not an advisory body to the council, so we're not to be expecting that the Sea Level Rise Committee will bring forward recommendations. We are the decision-making body on council, and members of the Sea Level Rise Committee from the Harbor Commission, from Planning Commission, from parks, from different areas, are helping to inform the understanding of the impacts and direction for staff to be able to bring recommendations forward. So I just wanted to emphasize that, that the meetings are so well-run and informative. And one of the things early on, Ms. Hetrick, that you mentioned us, that you were sort of our grief counselor, and there is that sense of grief with realizing that what's at stake are our beaches, our safety, our coast, our infrastructure, critical infrastructure. And you've really held us through that and helped us with information. But something else that you brought up really early on that I want to emphasize is that we were not going to debate that sea level was rising or that climate change was happening, that the science is there, the data is there, and our task is to move forward with the planning for that eventuality, not to spend a lot of our energies on debating whether that's actually happening or not. And I would say to anybody who thinks it might not be happening, the data is so conclusive that we're warming and changing and that the sea level already is rising, and storms are not just more extreme, but also more frequent. I mean, we have more hurricanes within a cycle than ever before. We have more high tides than ever before in a more rapid cycle, which are all things that you've explained to us also at the Sea Level Rise Committee. In my view, I just really commend the city for being proactive and facing this head-on, not debating whether it's happening, but being very proactive about the planning. In my view, we can't move fast enough, even though I believe staff is moving as quickly as possible and as thoroughly as possible. I want to voice my support if we need extra staffing for that eventually, or new positions, or whatever it takes to make this a priority and something that, you're working with so many different departments throughout the city, but then also stakeholders beyond the city, and whatever support will be needed in that, I'd be very supportive of. When we are, when you're mentioning the different rates of rise in different areas, and every, between every Sea Level Rise meeting, there's new data that comes out that suggests that this is accelerating. So we've just gotten new studies about, in our channel, the thermal expansion and that our channel waters are heated faster than other waters across the state, and we may have increased levels. And we've talked about that at the committee also, that having those trigger points of sea level rise, these are really minimums of when they might happen. And when we talk about acceleration over time, all of this is with the assumption that we are not taking action. If we took no further action, this is what the models predict. But on top of that is the assumption that there's no change to our carbon emissions, our CO2 emissions. And we know that instead of leveling off, that actually those are increasing as well. So on top of this being, if no action was taken, there is the accelerating factor possibly that this assumes constant carbon emissions, and that is actually accelerating as well. So I think it was a really wise and thoughtful decision to look at the trigger points in terms of levels and not years, that this is, this may be more imminent than these years suggest. I'm looking forward to when this does go out to public comment and public outreach. I think we've all in the committee just been waiting for that, for when this is released, and it can go to each of the individual boards and commissions, so they can take a granular look. I know Harbor Commission is waiting for that, Planning Commission is waiting for that, Water Commission, all these individual areas. And to Ms. Hauser's comment, that it's a plan to have a plan to have a plan, but we want to be so thorough. And the first part of that is this vulnerability assessment. What are our vulnerabilities? Where are they? And then looking further towards that. And our local, newly approved local coastal plan addresses some of the Planning Commission issues about building in some of these areas or not. I think also, I've been looking forward to this being in public comment too, to just the budgetary considerations that will come down the line for some of these mitigations can be outside of the realm of what we can even possibly afford as a city. And I think that's something that's important to emphasize here is the continuum of possible mitigations from completely armoring the coast, which fiscally is just not going to be an option possibly, to managed retreat and different, everything in between. And so it's a big task you have, looking at all of the fiscal impacts of that, what needs to be done more immediately, what can be looked at long-term. We certainly will be looking at grants and outside funding and possibly our legislative platform and what we can do as a coastal city, to be looking forward to that. And something that you showed us at a Sea Level Rise Committee meeting was just the preliminaries of a staged and phased approach, not just to the outreach, but to what types of things in the city would need to be done right away to start addressing some of these things like Cabrillo Boulevard or inundation during extreme weather events. And I just, the work that you have presented to us has been so excellent. And in addition, not just relying on the consultant's reports, but taking those reports and looking at it really tailored to our city and how those impacts affect each of these different aspects of our city. And I just thank you for leading us in that. And just, we can't move fast enough in terms of funding, staffing, and looking at this head-on, so commend you.
Thanks. Mr. Oscar Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank staff again for that really insightful report. I just, again, want to reiterate how we should all be mindful about taking action now, about keeping our water and neighborhoods clean. You don't even have to believe in climate change to know that, just look at this map. This is the current flood map, right? And you're saying that it could potentially get worse with the evidence that's showing that climate change is getting, getting worse. This is how it is now, and it's already in areas that contain very dangerous elements to human life and sea life. So I know that these institutions that are located there have been there for, you know, over 100 years, but we should all be mindful that we should start reaching out to them and working with them and helping to, helping them to relocate at some point soon. And I know that's easier said than done, but I feel like it's pretty imperative because it only seems like it's getting worse. So I would just encourage city staff and the community and us council members to reach out to these entities and try to get them to find a new home. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. We have good minds working on this for us. I feel... I feel concerned, but also assured that you're doing a good job over there for us. Thank you so much. And I'm with Councilmember Friedman, I think our basic functions of providing water, collecting sewage and treating our sewage, our desal plant is in that vulnerable area too, so thank you for looking out for those important city functions. And I'm glad the news media are here, we've already seen articles appearing in the print media as well. Thank you for carrying the message for us. Like Mr. Gutierrez says, everybody needs to be aware and ready to respond. So, we'll close this item with thanks and move on to the next part of the meeting. We'll see you next month, right? I saw on the calendar, February, okay. So, council and staff communications is the next item. Usually, our staff talk in other times, but Mr. Kalan, I'd like to give you the floor. Last week, during the review of new laws, we asked you to prepare some information for us. Can you tell us you're ready to give us what we asked for, I think?
That's right, Mayor. Let me pass out to the council four things. The item in the envelope is a non-confidential memo that explains the state law of preemption as it applies to chartered cities like Santa Barbara's land use power. I've done it with pretty extensive notes to give you the platform you need to assess the state legislation that we discussed last week. I've also got three newspaper articles, and they came out of a conversation I had last week with the city attorney in San Mateo. San Mateo was sued under the Housing Accountability Act, and successfully in the trial court, won a decision where the trial judge found the Housing Accountability Act was preempted by state, excuse me, was preempted by the city's municipal affairs authority. The last of the news articles from the Chronicle is dated today, you'll see that our attorney general is intervening against San Mateo to try and assert the Housing Accountability Act. So, I've answered the survey report you've asked for. Mr. Casey and I discussed this yesterday. It is probably the best path for the council to consider this confidentially. I did not want to give you advice on any of the specific bills publicly at this point, I think you may want to release it eventually. So, what we're thinking, depending on the council's response, is that we would schedule one or more closed sessions to talk about your obligations and rights under this bundle of new state laws. So, I'd be happy to answer questions, but otherwise, I just wanted to deliver the report.
Well, thank you. Without having read it, I would agree that we should have a closed session to discuss what you've prepared, and to make it clear to the public, it's how our city is interacting with state regulation and asserting our authority. Do I have that right? Okay.
Exactly right.
Okay. We thank you for that, and we'll move on to the next item, which is committee assignment reports. So, for the two new people, this is where all those assignments that we handed out earlier today, you go to meetings, and you come back, and you report, oh, this is what happened at the Planning Commission, or, you know, just pick one big thing, because sometimes there's a whole bunch. And then also, if you've gone to special events in the community, this is the time to tell us that you attended those events. So, who had their light on first? Was it Mr. Friedman? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I attended the Library Advisory Board, where we got an update on Library Plaza, and it got its preliminary design approval, so that's great. And then, the foundation is getting ready to go forward with the campaign this year, so there's going to be some movement on the plaza, which is great. I also attended the one, January 9th, Debris Flow Memorial in Montecito. Thank you to all the volunteers who put on that event, I saw many of my colleagues there. It was very well-done, very moving, and a great way to, the community to come together and reflect on those who lost their lives, and those who are forever changed because of it. And then, I also attended the Botanic Gardens Eighth Annual Conservation Symposium, and the topic this year was getting children back into nature. And the congratulations to the John C. Pritzloff Award winner, Conservation Award winner for this year, Richard Louv, who gave one of the, I've been to many addresses over the years, and he gave one of the most moving and important lectures that I've heard on a topic, and just about the importance of reconnecting children to nature, and how by doing so, we actually are able to, adults who can communicate better with each other, among other things. And about 15 years ago, he wrote a book called Last Child in the Woods, and it's about the generations coming up might not ever go out into nature, and so, we have to find a way to get them back in there. And that was just a part of the day, and it was an all-day event, but it was great, attended by about 200 or so people, and congratulations to the garden for that topic and a great event, and Steve Winager, their director, for putting it on, and all your staff and volunteers.
Thank you. Ms. Nen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended the January 9th Raising Our Lights Night of Remembrance event with Councilmember Friedman, and many members of the community coming together, and really, really moving remembrance, and a nice opportunity to think of the positive community that's come from that. I also attended the grand reopening of Cold Springs Trail, really congratulate the Bucket Brigade, Ashley Mayfield of the Montecito Trails Foundation, in collaboration with the county, the city, the National Forest Service, and community members who had come out over the last, over a year, almost two years, of getting that trail ready and clearing it, and talk about connecting back with nature, there were a lot of, a lot of people really enjoying the trail reopening. I also attended the Rose Garden pruning event, there were over 60 volunteers out, and our Parks and Recreation Department out in force, and we got that whole garden pruned, it was pretty, it seemed overwhelming, and then was done, but it was also a great community event, a lot of people come out for that, and just, in pruning and chatting with each other, and that was great work by the Parks Department. And then, the ordinance committee meeting today, and that's it.
Thank you. I attended the Coast Rail Coordinating Council meeting, this was back in December, so I'm kind of catching up on my reports, and one of the important items that came out of that that we were looking at, because we deal with Amtrak, so Amtrak has buses that connect in between train lines, and a law passed by which people could ride the bus without having to buy a train ticket. So, if you can believe it, there were some train regulations, train has a lot of regulations, and so, it's just, it's a small thing, but it's a way to improve how people get around, especially in the Central Valley, there's a lot of connections there, so nice, a nice development for us. The Coast Rail Coordinating Council has also hired a lobbyist, and so, we're working hard to improve passenger rail in the central coast. Also related to SB CAG, I attended their meeting December 19th, they decided to have a meeting right before holiday, the big holiday, so. So, interesting coming out of there is California will be removing the call boxes that you see on the highway, because almost everybody has a cellphone, but they'll leave the ones where there's a spotty cell connection and in other areas. So, kind of a big deal, because it was really a cool system for safety, and that, it seems, it makes sense to remove them and do something differently with that money. And then, at Air Pollution Control District, and this is good for all of you, since you're all district representatives, when you get a complaint about leaf blowers, APCD is, they have grants to help people replace gas-powered leaf blowers with electric ones. I mean, some people are irritated by the electric ones too, so can't win, but APCD's trying to help with that, they're very polluting too. I attended the Fielding Graduate University, gave Dolores Werthe a Medal for Social Transformation, that was a great event a couple of nights ago. Downtown Santa Barbara Board met today, there's a lot of new board members, that's good, some new, some new blood in there. And SB ACT, which is our partner in homelessness collaboration, they gave a presentation to the downtown board. Of course, our downtown has issues related to people living on the street, and so, it was a, it was a good presentation there. That's all I have, and we have two closed sessions, we're going to go forward with those. What are they, Ms. Clerk?
Item 14, waterfront director appointment as described in Agenda Item 14, and Item 15, conference with city attorney existing litigation, Government Code Section 54956.91 as described in Agenda Item 15.
Thanks. So, Mr. Kalan, will we report out, do you think, or no?
On the first closed-session item involving an appointment, you will have to report out.
Okay, so, City TV standby, but in the meantime, I'd like to adjourn the meeting to closed session in honor of Susan Shank. She was Mesa resident, very involved with civics and the community, and we send condolences to her family, that's Susan Shank. We're adjourned to closed session. Thank you. Your first task is public speaking. Thank you.
Very good. No, I'll keep it brief, but yeah, I just wanted to thank council first, and then Harbor Commission, and Mr. Casey and the city. I definitely take this opportunity seriously, I have a real vested interest in the harbor and the operations down there, and I think it is a great fit with my background, and really looking forward to working with the great staff at the waterfront, it's a good operation now, and I hope that I can add some value, and yeah, look forward to more to come, but thank you very much.
Thank you for the work you've done for the city so far, and congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We're adjourned back into closed session, and we won't be reporting out.